Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order Frazier City Council. Frazier virtual in-person meeting. You gotta stop that, that's not gonna work.
Even better the second time. Why is Mike repeating himself?
I can't hear myself.
It's entertaining. No, Amy said she did. It's entertaining. There you go. Yeah, no, I always bring my own, yeah. No reverberation now?
Test, test.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Test, test. I'd like to call the Frazier City Council meeting for Thursday, December 9th, 2021 at 6:34 PM. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you at this time, Mary, could you please call roll call?
I'll call it.
Or Cynthia, sorry.
Councilmember Bransky.
Present.
Councilmember Blenke.
Present.
Mayor Carnegie.
Present.
Councilmember Odell.
Present.
Councilmember Shornick.
Here.
Councilmember Sutherland.
Present.
Councilmember Winawiki.
I think he's on his way, isn't he?
Yeah, he's.
He's delayed at this time.
He's en route.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Here he is.
See, perfect timing.
It's called roll, we haven't done anything else.
Can we turn the volume down on that until we have somebody? Hey. Perfect.
I was doing fine.
No, he didn't stand a thing there. Is that working on it? Love technology.
Are we good lieutenant, did he fix it or?
No, we're disconnected.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
What did IT rate say about that?
There hasn't been any network failures, any of the failures that we've had, especially we had one the other day with DPW, have all been rooted in the connection between the building and the lines outside.
So Comcast? Are we on WoW, what are we on?
We had them drop at DPW the other day and they checked the whole server and it was like connection with the lines, not with anything that was housed in our IT.
Are we on WoW or?
Okay, well, we're gonna go ahead and get going, he's gonna turn it down and we see we can operate this meeting and get it going. Cynthia, for the record, if you can mark. Winawiki present now?
Wouldn't be a day that ended in Y if there wasn't some kind of. Let's see, say something.
Test, test, test.
Absolutely.
Testing one, two, three, testing one, two, three.
We have liftoff, Houston.
Okay, item four, there is, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda. I'd like to have a short presentation by the Frazier Public Schools and have that after we, just before we do new business. Sorry, that's my motion, I need a second.
A second.
Motion and second to amend the agenda. Questions on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other amendments at this time by other council? You know, pro temp Shornick?
Yes, under eight B, I'd like to remove that until we have a better direction on, we have to work our way from the top on down, so.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to remove item eight B. To gather more information.
Hopefully we'll have information then we can move forward with it next month.
Sounds good. Any comments and questions on that motion? I see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other amendments at this time by council? I see none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion.
Councilwoman Bransky.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Your motion is second to approve the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item five, citizen participation, this is only on agenda items and you will not be around for the entirety of the meeting. If you'd like to speak now only on an agenda item, now is the time to make yourself identified, noticed, and we will call on you. Is there anybody at this time? Sir. That's, that would be during general open session at the end. Yeah, it's not on the agenda at this time. Yep, yep. Anyone else, sir? Yep. You have a question?
You gotta come up to the mic.
You have to come up, come up to the microphone on stage. I just need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anthony Lobbo. I live in the, what do you call it, Pinewood condos, 15 in Utica area. So, I've been resident only since March, but I've been a Warren resident for like 20 years. So I've seen, I've been in a few council meetings at times, especially for Parks and Recreation, because I was involved as a lifeguard and there was, it was a lot of fun to watch that. In one regards to how they rechanneled their money from the general fund and finally had a vote on for Parks and Recreation locked down. They had a petition, then they had put it into voting, and they eventually locked it down. And so all the, and especially the AARP had also involved themselves at that time to lock down the money for Parks and Recreation. I'm just voicing this because I just wanna know if you wanna know about this information or not. It might be irrelevant, but that's to me, it's kind of relevant, because you wanna have that money locked down and not, let's say, slides somewhere else.
I don't, I'm a little confused on what type of information you're offering, sir. I'm confused on what type of information are you offering?
Well, the other thing, okay, what can I offer?
What, I mean, this is regarding the opening of Parks and Recreation.
Well, that the money doesn't get squandered out into the, from the, from the, gets squandered through, through the, through the system.
We have a budget set for Parks and Recreation and money's allocated for Parks and Recreation.
As long as it's locked down. Because it wasn't locked down in the city of Warren, because I've seen what happened there.
It would take.
Back in the past.
The work of council to move that money or do something totally different with it.
Okay. I have no more, nothing else to say.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else at this time? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll bring it back. Councilman Winawiki.
Yes, I would make a motion to, having not heard any callouts on the consent agenda, I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second for item six, to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Any comments or questions on that motion? I see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Presentations. Excuse me, I had a note that was, was next, the school board superintendent, Frazier Public Schools superintendent, wanted to have the floor for a little bit, so I.
It's gonna take a lot of time, but I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to say a few words today. Everybody knows last week was incredibly difficult for schools in Michigan, schools across the United States. The tragedy in Oxford was just absolutely terrible and it really, I think, touched a lot of people in Frazier. And I just wanted to take a minute and just to thank all of the Frazier Police Department and Public Safety. They were tremendous and I am just so grateful for that partnership. And on behalf of our Board of Education, I wanted to come here tonight to let you know what a special place this is. I mean, I, I know Officer Bisby is here, I think Wednesday night I was on the phone with him till 1:30 in the morning. The attention our police made to all of the rumors and the many things that were flying around was amazing. I don't, we couldn't ask for, you know, a better team and I'm really grateful for that. And I wanted to share that with all of you. And I think the other piece that is really incredible, I mean, I talked to a lot of superintendents, was their presence in our buildings the days that followed. Our police officers and Officer Valdi, who's our police liaison, were talking to kids. I mean, they were there really to make them feel safe. And I'm just grateful for the partnership we have. And I know Mayor Carnegie, you've done lots of things with graduation for us and I'm really grateful for that. I think that is so important and it really is what makes Frazier a special place. And we do a great job in our school system, you know, I think keeping our kids safe and it's really a testament to our community. And, you know, since Thursday, knock on this table here, it's been quiet, kids are back in school. And, you know, we're trying to get back to business as usual, but it really is a community. And just the things our student council has done to reach out to Oxford has been tremendous. So I just wanted to come here tonight to say thank you. I'm really grateful for everything that you do and obviously for the Police Department, they really stepped up the past few weeks. I don't know if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
I just wanted to comment, you know, my wife works at Emerson Elementary and I've seen this hit her pretty hard too and what's going on. But even today, there was an officer at her school who even just got out and walked, walked the hallway and made the people feel good, made the kids feel welcome, and that's just so important. And my wife knows all these officers and been around them years and it still touches her even to this day, so yeah.
It makes a difference.
Kudos to our department again for just always being there, so.
I agree. It's gonna take some time, but, you know, we'll get through this together, as I always say. And again, I'm just, I'm grateful for everything that all of you do. I know how hard it is to be on a board and the time commitment it takes and I'm grateful for everything that you do. So, you know, we're here, if you ever wanna need anything, and again, I appreciate that partnership. And again, I don't wanna take too much of your time, but I did wanna say thank you.
Councilwoman Bransky?
Yeah, I wanna thank the school and obviously the police officers. My daughter was one that continued to attend and would text me and say, there's two kids in a class and there's four kids in a class. And, and, you know, everyone made personal choices and God bless all of them for the choices they made. So I told her, you're actually safer there because there are more police officers there and administrators there. And so she was not happy with me that I wouldn't let her stay home. But because I have you here and I know that people have asked for it, and I'm just wondering, are there any plans at some point to sort of have some sort of, and I know that emotions are high and there's rumors and speculations and we know better than anything about that. But some sort of community forum at some point to really make sure that everyone understands all the stuff the schools do have, like the locks you have and the protocols you have, you know, because my daughter will say something and we'll be like, um, no. And I know that, you know, so is there a plan in place, can, maybe you could just?
I can share that for you, that's a great question. I'm gonna do it after Christmas, we only have like a week and a half left and I think we need to let things settle down a little bit. But we are gonna put together a community forum and I'm working with my communications director to really talk about two things. One, what we're doing to prevent, oh, to prevent what's happening. And I think that's the key here. I think we've all heard of the different concerns people have had about what happened in Oxford. We have a really tight threat assessment protocol we put together about four years ago. And right now, I'm meeting with all of our staff, we're going to every building this week. My ONM director, Dan Waters, and I, we kind of quarterback the safety piece, Officer Valdi's participating. And it's been, I know, I believe Officer Bisby might be coming along to some of those as well. And we're trying to really calm down the staff, they had a lot of concerns. But we had a company come in, I wanna say in 2019, Secure Educational Consultants, everybody was trained in run, hide, fight. And I think people need to really, like you said, Mrs. Bransky, understand that. And my goal this month is to get to the staff and to talk to them about it. But then in January, have a community conversation. I'm also working on, in our next newsletter, really outlining both of those pieces, because I think people need to understand, you know, we do have Sally Ports, you know, there's only three points of entry at the high school in the morning and then everything's locked down. You know, they have to come through the main office. And we've put a lot of work into that, we have cameras everywhere. We've done a lot of things, I think, to be proactive, but I think that biggest piece is the mental health side of the house, that threat assessment piece. We have a very sophisticated protocol from the University of Virginia we use. And I shared that actually last night with our Board of Education and they also said, you know, parents need to know that this is what we do. In our district, the social worker, the counselor, has to be partnered with an administrator to go through the process. And that has to happen, because it's really the school administrator that has the, I hate to say it, the teeth that are gonna get them to, you know, to either be suspended and they're the ones that would reach out to the police, which, that's our standard practice. So great question, thank you for that, yeah.
You're welcome.
All right, again, I appreciate, I don't wanna take up too much of your time, I know these meetings go long.
Understatement.
I know, I know. But again, we're very thankful and grateful for everything that you do and have a wonderful holiday and we'll, we'll just continue to work together to do what's best for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Happy holidays. Okay, item six A, city council, oh, I'm sorry, new business, item seven A, set date for the 2022 CDBG public hearing. Believe we normally just do that in our regular council meeting. Which that would be the.
The January 15th?
13th, January 13th.
I'll make a motion to set it for that date.
Yep, please do. We have a motion and a second for setting the date for the January 13th. Any comments and questions on that motion? Comments or questions from the audience? I see now, I'll call back for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Announcement of vacancies of boards and committees. Sarah, are you handling this part?
Actually Elaine had asked me to review this, if you'd like me to go over what I had.
Yes, we, her and I went over it before last week during our meeting.
I'm sorry that I missed that.
Right, so.
Hope to be there.
So, yeah, so all.
I'm sorry to make you laugh. I just, I understand. Best made plans.
So all councils brought up to speed and what you have available and what's going on?
Right, so I believe it was either last month's meeting or the meeting before, there was some discussion about putting this on one of the next agendas. I think what had happened was in some of the transition, not all of the boards were fully numbered. So you had asked, Elaine, City Manager Levin, had asked that I go through the handbook and go through the minutes to see what vacancies we had. And so this is just what I had presented to you, that we had, the assessing board review has, member whose term is ending, historical commission has two vacancies on it, recreation has two vacancies, planning commission has one and ZDA has one. So I think that I had spoken with her and she had mentioned something about you would most likely direct us to advertise for those people, perhaps put something on the website and maybe put something on the cable channel and put it out there. So I, I think that's the direction I'll be looking for from you and then I can go ahead and take care of that. But I feel that's what you guys had asked for, which you asked me to do.
Then have there been any recent applications turned in for some of the positions that are open? I've heard that people who were interested and they were gonna put in, but I don't know if they have not.
So the only thing that I received was from a gentleman on the planning commission that just submitted a letter of interest tonight and I did put that in front of everybody right before the meeting, he had just sent it in probably about 5:30. And I, I have not gotten anything else. I do know though, we are probably, there are probably going to be a couple more vacancies as well. I'll get those to City Manager Levin and I'm sure she will send them out in her weekly update.
And so we had another resignation from the record.
Recreation, yes, yes, sir.
So that make three?
Yes.
Yeah, so our goal obviously is fill these as soon as possible and see what we can do to.
Right, and I thought if you were gonna direct me to do that, we could probably get on that first thing in the morning, just so that's on there for this weekend, so people can see it and.
Yeah, we don't have to wait until you get a whole bunch of them lined up. As they come available and they want to position, we should fill that position and move forward.
Okay.
You mean individual, not?
Right.
I was like, there's a time period that you have it end at.
Right.
And then whoever has submitted, then we consider all of those. I was like, Mr. Mayor, hold on, first in is not first out. I like your accounting, but.
Trying to push this government law.
I'm with you, I said I like your accounting.
Okay. Councilwoman Shornick?
Well, since Mr. Warnock has already submitted that he wishes to stay on the board and his term does expire on the 31st, I would think that wouldn't we want to reappoint these individuals today in order, so that they can function next month, because their meetings, there's some of their meetings are with ours.
Well, that's what I was saying, the ones that can be filled.
Yeah, I know, but these are just like, well, right now, I'm assuming, and maybe I shouldn't assume, but I'm assuming that Mr. Perry, Mrs. Barr are gonna wanna stay on the planning commission as well. I'm sure Mrs. Menendez and Mr. Schmenter would wanna stay on the Board of Appeals. I don't know Ms. Decker or Mr. Pressel, so I can't speak for them, but I know the rest of them.
We were gonna reach out to some of these people.
No, I, I do know that Mary did call the people on the next agenda item and she spoke with all of them and they had all agreed that they would be very happy and willing to take another term.
Oh, good. Oh, who, who doesn't now wanna be reappointed? Okay.
And he actually wasn't even on that list, because his term ends at a later date. But he will be coming back next, perhaps next month for a reappointment for that position.
Okay, so.
But the people on the list in the item that says reappointments, Mary did reach out to them. All of them have agreed to take on another term, so the end dates listed on that item, if council would so choose to approve those, then we would have those filled.
Well, I do too, I'm just gonna make sure we're not violating any dates or some times. Probably if they just wanna stay on, Nick. Right, once the position's filled, they can keep that position, we don't have to.
No, we have to reappoint them.
We're just reappointing.
I'm not sure I understand the question, they all have terms, in terms, their terms do expire. My understanding of most of them is they do serve until their successors are appointed and qualified. So if they weren't reappointed timely, if we forgot or overlooked it or needed an extra month, they would continue to serve as a sort of de facto member until their successor or themselves were reappointed. But that being said, it's not indefinite, so the better approach is to reappoint for the next term coming up.
Not to mention, we still have openings, so if there are individuals who are actually interested in that position, it's not like we're not giving somebody the opportunity to still be on there. it's not like we're not giving somebody the opportunity to still be on there.
So that, we can do that and see.
I have a different perspective. But I was waiting for my light to get on. I, we appoint all of these people. And we are therefore responsible for their actions, their behaviors, their decisions, in an indirect way. I don't know all, I know a lot of these people, and of course, I'm going to vote for some of them. But I don't know all of them, and I don't know who else wants to do these positions, if any. Some are, need a lot of people, and some don't. Some, so I would rather see everyone that wants to be reappointed or appointed actually do what Mr. Warnock did, and give us, you know, their resume. And if I'm making the appointment, I need to know what they're bringing to the table. So, I, that's just me personally. Because this is a perfect opportunity for us to make sure that, in fact, those that we're appointing are the best of the candidate pool that we have. And it's not to say that those that are on the board are not. That's not it at all. I think we have some really great people here. I just don't rubber stamp and don't just push the broom along. And that's what I feel like we would be doing. So, that's just me.
But, but I think direction was given to at least call them and verify...
Well, I don't know who gave them that direction. This is the first we're talking about it.
No, just about the ones who, were they still interested in serving or not serving?
No, I understood what she said. I'm just saying, I personally would like to do like we do with any vacancy or any appointment, have the packets of people, have their qualifications, and then make a motion. That's just me. I can't speak to Kenny Perry Jr. I don't know anything about him. If he was sitting in the lobby right now, I don't know who he is. So... Yeah.
And it's how you should do it with HR, anyway, right? You're bringing all the people, commission members on, it should be that way.
So, my motion would have been for, because we've kind of merged B and C. My motion would have been to direct the city to post the vacancies and positions, all vacancies or renewals that will be needed through the end of the year. How long should they, how long are they typically left open? You know, applications in by X date? Three weeks?
Before our next council meeting.
Well, but with the holiday, I don't want to... That's what I'm asking him.
Yeah, I don't know that we have anything in the ordinances that requires a posting period. But, you know, you have to decide what's sufficient amount of time to get the word out and get interest levels back in. And if you feel like you have enough time between now and your next meeting, you would want to set that deadline early enough so that administration has time to prepare all that for you.
I don't want to jam them up over the holiday with all their vacations.
We've actually had some things open for all year long.
We just didn't post some, I mean... So, all right, I'll make my motion that all vacancies through the December 31st are posted for a period of 30 days.
Second.
If I could just clarify that motion, all vacancies through, all vacancies occurring on?
Up, yeah. All, all, all positions that are either vacant or requiring reappointment up...
As of?
As of December 31st, 2021? Or should it be January 1st?
January 1st.
As of January 1st, 2022, shall be posted with a 30-day period of time to submit interest. And then, we would be able to address and appoint in the February meeting, based on the presumption that they can serve through January. I'm not, because I don't, it's not that I don't want Mr. Warnock. I want to see all of my candidates. I have a feeling I will be motioning for him. I just feel like that's the right way to do it, procedure.
To help administration, is the motion to open the 30-day window beginning January 1st? Or do you want the window opened now, but to run for 30 days from January 1st? I'm just trying to get their direction settled for them.
I want it to open now, because I want to not jam them up. And so, 30 days from now, would that be appropriate? Yeah. Yeah. So, all of these positions that are vacant, plus these on the sheet...
Or becoming vacant.
Or becoming vacant, will be posted now, and they'll be 30 days, so they'd have until January...
Pretty much our next meeting.
Yeah, to apply.
Pretty close.
And then, yes. So, that's how I'd like it to be. Thank you for helping me.
Just trying to make sure it's clear.
And I was just trying to make it, I don't want to jam them up at Christmas. Coming right back, and, you know, they got to go through all these, you know. You're welcome.
Do you have any motion in a second? May I approach them, Shornick?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, then, we make a motion after this motion, that we get the notifications, the 60 days before the terms expire. Because we've had a habit, meaning the city is in general, of doing appointments after their expiration, their term has expired. I'm really tired of doing everything after. I want to get in front of stuff for a change. So, if we could, as a caveat to that, if you want to just extend that motion, or if you don't mind, or a second motion after this motion is done, with regards to we get a notice of all boards' expiration dates, 60 days before they expire, so that we can...
Make it a policy.
Yeah, I want to make it a policy.
I actually, yesterday, just put together a board roster. So, I showed the date that they were appointed, when their term ends. So, I can get that out to everybody in an email, so you can see where we're at. And then, I'm trying to get in the groove here, and just maybe perhaps put in, you know, the files for whatever, months, two months beforehand, that you are made aware of.
Awesome.
Okay?
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Well, as part of that, too, you might want to have those whose terms are expiring, expire proactively.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's if we know 60 days ahead of time we can, that's why, yeah.
Encourage both sides.
Exactly.
You got to have your mic on. Come out. I don't know if it was you or Dana. Is your mic on?
Yeah.
Oh, you just came out.
I don't know if it was.
He's the mic police.
He makes sure, it says, "Don't touch it." I'm not touching it.
I think you have to lean forward sometimes. We can't, as short people are, you know, and you can't get your chair in.
Even just another idea, Cynthia, you can consider is, since council appoints these, you know, I know you guys just sent me an updated org chart. But if you have these committees that come off to the side, and their names, and you have their dates and expires and all that, right on there, right? A part of that whole general layout of the city and how it works, that's all. We have a motion in a second. Any comments, questions from the audience? Come forward, name and address, please. I forget.
Okay, Laura Lessig, 1-5201, Fairview. I know this is all new, but in the past, when we've had people applying for a position, for example, the Parks and Rec Commission, they would submit their applications. The Parks and Rec Commission would actually discuss and interview the applicants, vote on a recommendation, and then bring that to council, and then council would vote. I don't know how the other commissions handle it. I would assume the Planning Commission might do that, the same thing, where you would go to the Planning Department, they'd interview and talk with these people. Because you could have more people applying than positions available. Like, I was, I'm totally with you about letting everybody apply before you make those decisions. So, my only point is that the commission should be involved with the recommendations prior to it coming to council for vote. That's all.
You mean that for existing positions?
Pardon me?
Existing commissioners, or just new?
No, all of them. Because even when you are reapplying, in the past, Parks and Rec, we would set this up two months before their position was over with. Patrice, you know. And we would go through the interview process before their commission date was up. So, then, it rolls into the next term smoothly, and you don't have these openings. We've had the openings on Parks and Rec. The one has been for several, several months, and nothing's been done about it. And I know the one on the Planning Commission as well. So, like, we need to get ahead of it.
DBA and all that was interviewed, right.
Is that required by the charter or ordinances? Don, do you know?
No, but she is right, and I do remember that. That was a practice we had, where each board was given sort of the privilege of interviewing the interested people in the community that wanted to serve on their board.
They made the recommendations.
And then they'd make a recommendation, or say to the council, "We recommend this person, or that person, or these people." Or, I suppose, they might say, "They're all qualified, and we're not picking and choosing." But that was done in the past, and it's been years. It hasn't happened in the last recent years that I can think of.
Because I don't think we've, yeah, I don't think we've had enough people apply.
We've done appointments without, yeah, we have, for, not, first other...
Where zoning has interviewed its own candidates?
No, we, without interviews, like, we did...
That's what I'm saying, is I don't, I can't remember a time that zoning board has interviewed anybody in the last three, four, five years. So, it's probably, my recollection is probably going back to the early 2000s.
It's been sooner than that, Don. I remember a position, because one person was trying to get in, and then barely, you know, got through, so...
But you didn't answer my question. Is it required?
It is not. It is sort of a courtesy thing, where the council has deferred to the individual boards to provide recommendations, in part because you don't know everybody that's applying.
Right.
And so, I think it was helpful for that. And as a public meeting, all of you could see that as well, that interview process.
Oh, I got it. So, they actually did the front-end labor?
Yes.
All right. Well, so we, well, then, I guess, the motion doesn't change. It's just what we do with it after. So, I'll leave my motion as it is, and then we can, just to not make this seven-part motion for...
The whole process of back to government.
It's going to be, bingo, right? I was ready to appoint them in February.
Back to a three-month process. Okay, we do have more, any other comments or questions from the audience? I'll bring them back for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have your direction.
Thank you so much.
So, that brings us down to C.
D.
All right, which we're not, I was just going to say, which we don't really have to do, because we covered that the last time. So, set meeting date for a city council workshop. Somebody just quickly...
So, I believe at the last meeting, also, I believe it was Councilmember Baransky that had said she would like to have some in-depth discussion on some matters that had been kind of hanging out there. And so, City Manager Levin asked me to put this on the agenda and pick the date of January 6th, so that we could set that meeting date, and I can public note that for us.
What time?
6:30.
Yep, 6:30.
At a Thursday?
That is a Thursday.
Okay.
I think so, yes.
And just to be fair, that is the night the zoning board meets? I don't know if that affects anyone, as far as...
We talked about having it, because it's not a formal type, it's just a workshop, and residents could come, if we could do it at the senior center, and actually show that, you know...
Oh, right. I'm not saying it would conflict with the room. I'm just saying, if it conflicts with anybody else's obligations to be part of that meeting.
But we, I don't want to steal this room from them, but we could do it at the senior center and set it up there, and we have more distancing for everybody, just wanted to come and participate and listen, so...
Would that conflict with your availability?
I, if they have a meeting, and I think, I thought I heard they were pretty confident they would be having one, because some meetings, they just don't have, some months, they just don't have agenda items. If they are having a meeting, I have an associate who is more than capable of handling that for them, unless it's something really insanely complicated. But, yeah, she's very qualified and will do a great job, and she has been. But I just wanted to point that out, that there will be two things happening simultaneously in the city.
Because I'm assuming we'd want council, just to make sure we're not, we go this way, and he says...
Yeah, just sort of just a stop.
Bingo.
But I thought some of the stuff that we're going to be discussing was to bring our new council members up to speed, but with closed-door issues. So, we can't do that in a workshop.
Can't do that in a workshop.
That's what I'm saying, can't do that in a workshop.
More just like, what, how, where, especially as we're about to go into budget and...
Some of the historicals.
And brainstorm five-year plans and...
Yep.
And I think one of my questions for you, although I defer to Elaine Levin, of course, what topics do you want covered? And it doesn't have to be decided that tonight, but just so we can all be prepared for your questions, and the things that are on your minds.
We were going to send out to council what the top ones were that everyone wanted to talk about to see, and she was going to put that list together.
That's a good idea. So, put like, three things and...
Yeah, we'll just combine them and make it realistic, where we can, if we can handle four, six of them, right? Set a time for each one, how long, 20 minutes per subject or something.
And of course, my final question for you, Mr. Mayor, not to keep stepping over you, but as far as preparation time, I know Ms. Levin has some plans to have a holiday vacation, and then we'll be back, you know, assuming she's back January 3rd. I don't know how much preparation she will need to do for the topics that you have in mind.
We talked about that.
Is she comfortable with January 6th?
Yeah, we talked about it, yeah.
Okay. And obviously, we can always have a follow-up, or, you know, do more afterward, the fact, if we're not ready for the 6th on something that comes out.
We did talk about it down in our meeting.
Okay, very good.
She's the one that suggested that date anyways, correct?
Yeah, we would have, we wanted to do it sooner than, more than later, anyway, but that date fit in with what she could get her stuff done.
It doesn't have to be everything, but the top five things or...
Make a motion that we approve the January 6, 2022 workshop meeting at the senior center at 6:30 PM.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any comments or questions from the audience on that motion? Any comments or questions from council? I call back for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E, approval of City of Fraser calendar for meeting dates.
So, again, the city manager had asked that I put together a schedule of meeting dates based on what has been customary in the past, as far as the date and time of the meetings. I did have Mary always text everything over for me, and she did point out to me that the meeting in April was actually the night before Good Friday, in case anyone has plans on it. If you wanted to change that particular date, I guess now would be the time to direct us to do so.
Yeah, Pro Tim Shornick?
I personally don't have a problem with it. I just was looking at my calendar, and all those dates fall on the second Thursday. We don't have to, like, rearrange any unless anybody has something planned. But I would make a motion to approve the dates as submitted.
Second.
A motion in a second, to approve as submitted. Any comments or questions on the motion from the audience? Any from council? Bring them back for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, janitorial service contract for the Senior Activities Center.
Presently, I am doing the janitorial services at the senior center. We were hoping to have somebody available to assist with that. I wasn't part of the bid process on this in the interviewing, but this was the candidate that was selected by Superintendent Ragsdale. I'm aware that the cost is...
Can you do that again?
Our DPW.
Yeah.
Mark was the one who had interviewed with them. I did not have involvement in the whole interview process, but this is who was recommended to me by their interviews and the people that had toured the facility. I would hope that we could, in some capacity, have a janitor, whether it be a part-time or through this contract. I'm aware that the cost is elevated, but this is the only option in lieu of me doing the janitorial services that I have at this time.
Well, how come the person who does City Hall now?
I wasn't involved in that discussion with Mr. Ragsdale and Amy, so...
Right over there, and do the same thing over there.
Who's doing City Hall?
About part-time.
Person?
Yeah. She's been here for years. Donna, her name's Donna?
And how did it fall to you to do it? I mean...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Sorry, I don't want that heard.
There's all, everyone's lit up, so if I can...
Literally. I'll shut up. Go ahead.
No, you started, so I'll take it later.
I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah.
So, so a couple of questions that I, for, obviously, we're getting, stop. We did not hire you to clean the senior center. I, I know, I cannot fathom how that, thank you. Let's start with thank you for doing that. I, I, I know, I cannot fathom how that, thank you, let's start with thank you for doing that, thank you for everything you've done. I know, we shouldn't have to make a motion for this, but that is a non-issue, you will not be cleaning the bathroom. We definitely need someone, this contract is incredibly expensive if you break it down at an hourly rate. Even, I was trying to do the math, and it was like forty-three dollars an hour if it was five hours a day, and seven days a week, and that, I'll do it.
So that's why I said I'll do it for her.
But, um, did we have other bids besides this bid?
I would have to default to Amy, I do see her on here, I wasn't involved in the steps that were taken up to this point. This was just the recommendation that was provided to me for janitorial services through their efforts.
I wanna call Molly Maids and say, "Come clean." Like, "Are you licensed, insured, and have workers comp, then we're good, and then you can come clean our building, right?" I mean, what else do we need, Don and Sarah, I mean...
The senior center's only open from eight to one, four days a week, how much, how much cleaning really is there? Are these contracts just for cleaning the carpets, trash, and, you know?
Let's go through the lights, we got a lot of lights here, so, Councilman O'Dell, go ahead.
Since, yeah, yeah, sorry. Yeah, forty-four thousand dollars a year to clean five days a week, I, it's just outrageous cost, in my opinion. Probably a two-day-a-week clean, or, would be sufficient, I would think, for just trash, vacuuming, basic cleaning, because it's not being used to its fullest extent, yeah, it'll, the need will come as the senior gets longer hours, but I would rather like to see a local company, maybe a smaller company, and come in and do it for much, much cheaper, I'm sure we can find somebody. Or, as we eventually staff up for the senior center, have a worker that's there that can stay an extra hour after it closes to do that light type of maintenance, and pay an extra hourly rate that we're already done. I, I cannot...
Councilwoman Sullivan.
For me, when I was looking at the agreement, it didn't start till January, so that also left a period of time, even though it may be short, that you would be left doing the cleaning, so if they were going to come in and do it, I didn't understand why, the reason for the delay, unless they weren't willing to come in any sooner. I don't know if you...
I haven't had any contact with Janikin, so this would be something I'd have to default to Amy and Mark on.
Okay. Can't hear you. Okay.
Hold on, we're going through the list, lights.
So, well, the other thing that I wanted to say is, so, I mean, it says that the contract would start, it had a start date, but it didn't have, like, very specific duration terms, and I didn't like the, I don't like the idea of an auto-renewal, as well.
Councilwoman Blinkie.
Thank you. First of all, I, I think this whole item is ridiculous as we sit here, because number one, first of all, I've never been introduced to you. Could you introduce yourself, you're the second-in-command of the city, and who are you, you're Sarah.
Hi, I'm Sarah Mistrada, nice to meet you, I've been here for a month now, sorry that I haven't met you in person or through a Zoom meeting.
No. Who are you, you're Sarah. Well, I'm being honest, I'm being completely honest, okay? Well, here's my concern, we're looking at this, and a couple of us have talked about it previous, which, Sarah, to your defense, in a way, you say you weren't involved, you weren't here, you had no contact, Mark isn't here, as the mayor said earlier, is Mark here?
Yep, no, he isn't.
Okay, well, my point is, you know, I guess I just wanted to meet you, and now that Mark is here, that, that should help you through this, but it seems like we're in a maze or something, everybody's got their concerns, because we've never gone with a global company before, and whoever this is, or whatever it is, I was just curious, and unless Mark would've came on, I would've said, possibly, let's call Molly Maids, made more sense than this, at this point. Thank you, sir, I'm done.
We are closed over the holidays at the senior center, so the terms, I believe, we had stated we'd start it on the 3rd when we'd reopen, so that addresses to that concern, but, other than that, that's the biggest, I think we can make it through the end of the year while we look at other options. I just don't want to see this to be the hindrance to keeping the facility open.
Councilwoman Shortnick, Mayor program.
Um, yeah, as I already said, there, I'm just gonna tell you, Mark, now that you're on too, there's not a chance in Hades, I will vote yes, for that amount of money, that's absurd, that, that's, that's more than I get paid, and I'm a VP for Christ's sake, that is not happening. I don't know why we did an RFP, I don't know why we just didn't post an ad for somebody who can do janitorial skills. All that, all that would need, and I'm telling you what, at this point, I will come do it, you're not doing it, we're not paying you to clean a bathroom, that's absurd. I'm just telling you, I appreciate you doing it, but that's not happening. If anything, I'm sorry, but one of our part-time guys, and yes, I know, Mark, you got a lot going on with the DPW, but either send the guy who's helping over at the senior apartments over to help, send the person who's helping here for right now, and grab somebody from the DPW, it's a matter of putting on some gloves, cleaning some toilets, wiping down some sinks, and vacuuming. That's like, I'm just, I was appalled, I literally had a meltdown when I saw that, there's just not a chance in heck. And did we, did we even reach out to any companies, we just put an RFP out? I know, I'm asking, that's what I said, did we even reach out to, I know, like, six different companies that do cleaning, and I will be happy to call every single one of them and ask them to put in a quote for us. I just didn't know this was even going on, this wasn't anything that was on our purview that anybody, because like, we all have people that we know through other things, we have people who clean my buildings at work, we have, I know, like, I seriously know, like, three people who run cleaning companies or work for cleaning companies, and they may not be huge companies, but I'm sure they give us a better deal, and, and to Mr. O'Dell's point, we only need somebody to come in, I mean, Sarah, if you want to walk around with a spray bottle, since everybody's still crazy, and spray everything every night, that would take, what, maybe ten minutes, right, the counters, all the, the touchable surfaces, but other than that...
Mainly dustmopping the gym, so keeping some of the insects down that we have in the blue room, trash and restrooms.
Yeah. That's like an hour. If, if that. So, I, I'm, I'm gonna just tell you, there's not, there's not a chance, and heck, I'm voting for that, not a chance, I'll do it myself first.
Councilwoman Winawicki.
Yep, I did give a referral, and the company that I referred did not, has not been contacted yet, so, Mark, I'll follow up with you tomorrow and give you that name of that company, but, in the absence of seeing more competitive bids, I cannot, I cannot support this particular proposal. It's very costly for the limited use that the building is getting, and I, I, I would not be able to support it. We didn't hear you, Mark.
Yes.
This was done with, between the city manager and H.I., I was asked to meet the first bidder over there, and then I brought up the fact that we use Janikin and Hamtramck, and we got them to come out to bid, and they were much cheaper, it were, I think it was twelve hundred dollars a month cheaper than the other company that bid on it. I also asked if I had the staff to supply to go over and clean, and I don't, because we lost, it was three, three of the part-timers that we have lost, but we're trying to backfill those positions right now, we're in the middle of that, because we just went in front of you last month for that, so we're in the process of that. Asked for Donna, Donna's maxed out in her hours by just cleaning City Hall, so there's no way that she would be able to go over and clean that in addition to City Hall, if they were within her, her hours. I also asked if we wanted to get more bids, but it was imperative that we get this done now, to, to start off, to, at least, to get somebody in here, because it opened in the senior center, so it was a matter of, but all I did was call one person, and, and my supervisor met one over there, and I met the other one, this was not my project, but all I did was call one person, and, and...
And, and thank you for facilitating that, Mark, I have a question. Why is Sarah cleaning instead of one of the other DPW workers? And thank you for facilitating that, Mark, I have a question. He what?
He said he doesn't have enough people, he's backfilling three positions.
Why is Sarah cleaning? Okay, I, I, was that what he was saying?
We just went through winterizing our fire hydrants in our leaf pickup program, it was all hands-on deck.
Was that what he was saying? Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, there's just a reverb, so it's hard to hear, so thank you for that.
Well, obviously, Mark, we have new direction, we have to go with this, if, um, this, this whole process needs to be started over.
Oh my God, hold on. Don, is there anything preventing us from entering into a contract with a commercial cleaning service? Don, is there anything preventing us from, you know, calling the five cleaners that, you know, if I pull up? I mean, as long as they have all the legal requirements that we would want, which is, you know, obviously, commercial insurance, workers' compensation, you know? Am I missing something here?
No, I don't think you are.
I get that they didn't get direction from us, and we can, I get that we created part of this problem, you know, because never in a million years did we expect the only bid we'd get to be fifty dollars an hour. I get that they didn't get direction from us, and we can, I get that we created part of this problem.
No, I think, as long as your direction to administration is to pursue some alternative, and as long as you've allocated budgeted funds for the operation, for this op, you know, the overall operation, cleaning would fit within the overall budget for the, you know, the senior center. As long as all of that's in place, I don't see any reason why we can't try a different tactic here, at least until we figure out a long-term solution.
Building maintenance is in the budget.
Right.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, as long as it's in there.
Not that much money.
So what I, well, so I could make a motion to authorize Elaine to enter into a contract on a month-to-month basis with a not-to-exceed hourly rate. Right, so that would, month, so for example, this is what I'm thinking, because I, we gotta solve, we got two problems here, and I want to solve the first problem. And Elaine can deal with the other solution. If I make a motion to say that you can enter into a contract, either not to exceeds dollar amount or not to exceeds hourly, I don't care what it is, but, you know, let's say thirty dollars an hour, and don't freak out at the number, because it's not the point. Because you're only entering into it for a month or two, right? So we get someone to start cleaning these bathrooms next week, or the week after. And then, second motion, to me, it sounds like we would want to hire a part-timer to do this at twenty dollars an hour, or fifteen dollars, whatever we're paying Donna, you know, for the longer-term solution, while also pursuing possibly your other contractors, does that make sense? I mean, because I don't want to just say, "Oh, go back to the drawing board, because guess what? Meet you over there on Tuesday, and I'll clean toilets with you." It's crazy.
I mean, if it's been all hands-on deck, though, with leaf pickup and...
Oh, yeah, I get that.
And the Christmas lights up, I, I mean, I know that they're short-staffed, but, I mean, for the time being, over the next month, or however long it's gonna take to get additional bids, maybe there would be some more capacity for DPW to be able to do it.
Right, yeah, because I would never put...
Leaf pickups one more time, right?
Yeah, I would never put Christmas lights over you cleaning toilets, I can't, like, that's, there's so many problems with that on HR levels. You did?
Of course you did, you're such a good hire. Thank you, thank you. I'm just wondering if we even had to go there yet.
I, I know, I hear you, yeah, and that's, that's Elaine to deal with that part of it, because now there should be more capacity if they finish fire hydrants, yeah, good point. Well, then the million-dollar question is, what number are you guys comfortable with to get them a short-term solution while we then interview and find a long-term solution?
Whatever, kind of what Donna does is perfect for that position, I mean, Donna...
No, I meant for the, um...
I am, whatever she, whatever we pay her, that type of...
The, the outside contractor would need much more, because they have to pay for insurance and all that kind of stuff, so...
Most of these jobs require a couple hours a night, I'm sorry, most of these jobs are gonna require a couple hours a night, just in the short term, but, I'd say, I, I would say, let's go with some local, like a Molly Maids or something like that, we know they're insured for a month-to-month basis till needed, why would we get other competitive bids?
Like, do you have a number, like, I mean, I don't know what, like, what does your company pay those people to clean it? To give a ballpark, you know, not to exceeds number?
They're probably paying someone ten to fifteen dollars an hour, and then their profit margin and stuff like that, you're probably talking about twenty-five dollars an hour or more, short-term, so...
So if we said not to exceed thirty dollars an hour for three hours a day, five days a week?
Thirty's competitive.
Okay, does that, is that...
I mean, these five days a week, like, two, three...
Well, I was, it was a not-to-exceeds, that's, I'm trying not to micromanage, because again, remember, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm with you guys a hundred percent, trust me, this is like... Amy said it was very hard to get this service filled, and so, if we just said five day, not to exceed thirty dollars an hour, five...
Two hours, two hours a night, and four days a week, because it's only open four days, so there's no need for five days right now.
If I said four hours a day, thirty dollars an hour, four days a week? I would be more comfortable with five, just because I just, that's just, I'm gonna make a motion, and you guys can modify it if you want. I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the city to hire on a month-to-month basis, with, with the ability to cancel each month, a cleaning service not to exceed thirty dollars an hour, with an, up to thirty dollars an hour, four hours a day, five days a week.
Second.
We have a motion in second, any comments and questions?
I have a second motion after that, so...
We do have a motion in second?
And tell me why you're shaking.
Comments and questions on the motion from the audience? Any comments, questions, council?
The lights are been on! Oh, well, you're gonna keep waiting.
Councilwoman Winawicki.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think, honestly, I see what you're trying to do is, like, think-tank this and problem to fix it, but I think we are micromanaging, because you don't know the, the volume of the work, there's no real job description that we're, you know, we keep saying toilets, well, I'm sure there's more to it, you know? There's no real job description that we're, you know, we keep saying toilets, well, I'm sure there's more to it, you know? I think if we ask Mark to, to redo this, put out a bid, let them, let him and Sarah figure out, or Elaine, what they need to be cleaned and how often, and what, we don't know who comes in and out, we don't know the traffic, you know, we really don't know that. So, my suggestion would be that we put it back to you guys. You, you problem-solve it, put it out on bids, get an idea, push your heads together, you hear what we're saying, and that's your job. I don't think we should have anything to do with that.
That, that's my second motion. This is a...
Pardon?
That would have been my second motion, because this is to get us through December, January, and probably February. But I am cognizant of the other issue, which... If, if needed, I guess the qualifier to my motion is if Elaine deems it necessary, i.e., there's not staffing within the existing staff that is not a department head to clean the bathrooms.
Okay, well, I'm just...
But, yeah, I hear you, yeah.
Okay. I'm suggesting, we are a part-time council, seriously, I think that these guys have to learn to work together. It's their job, it's not ours. And if they're not doing what we need, and then we get complaints, and we will tell you, I guarantee it, okay? And, and the thing is, I think we should, you know, you've, Amy already made the parameter of the cost. I mean, we already said, all of us, this is a very high cost. I think Mark and Sarah get it, and I think Elaine will get it, and I think, I, I see what you're saying for, for a short period of time. Again, let them do it, come back, you know, let us know what's going on, just let us know, to get through a short period, and then after the first of the year.
Right, so that, but they can't spend...
Does that make sense to anybody, or?
I, I know what you're saying.
There's also a little room with the part-time hours.
Exactly. I mean, that's what, I, I just, I don't think...
Like, have a cost analysis of part-time individual against a contractor?
No. I was trying to get a solution this month, not waiting for you to come back next month with an analysis of what needed to be done, because that's a different issue. We obviously have to rethink how we're gonna get this cleaned.
I mean, we've got Mr. Ragsdale on the phone. I mean, with the leaf pickup ceasing and the fire hydrant situation, is there capacity to have a part-time DPW worker go over to the senior activity center a few hours a week?
For the next six weeks.
The next six weeks to clean? I can't, we can't hear you.
Can anyone hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, uh, what, what you need to keep in mind, though, is the activity center's been closed for way over a year. So, the whole thing to be deep cleaned first, before you worry about cleaning the toilets.
We're talking about day-to-day maintenance.
Mail Pro Tom Shornick, I'm sorry.
Um, so, yeah, nope, I, I still absolutely have a problem with that. Honest to God, at this point, I'm volunteering myself. I will come two days a week. I will, why can't you? Why? Why? Huh? I'm not gonna get hurt! What am I do- I'm sweeping floors, vacuuming, and I'm dusting, and I'm cleaning toilets and sinks. I do that at my house every day.
Sorry, listen.
This conversation's supposed to be about the motion of...
I know, that's what I'm saying. I disagree. I'm, I'm not gonna spend that kinda money, and, okay, and I know it's, we're closed. You even said we're gonna be closed from Christmas to New Year's, so that's two weeks, so we're talking a week and a half.
Well, Mr. Ragsdale didn't answer my question.
I know, I know.
It's two weeks, so we're talking a week and a half.
We will make...
Go ahead, Mark. Can you, Mark?
Put something, something else, just get done. We, we'll, we'll make it work.
I was gonna say, Mark, can't you just spare a guy a couple days a week for the next couple of weeks to clean it?
Oh, yeah, withdraw my motion, then.
Absolutely.
First motion, I'll withdraw. Thank you.
Oh, my God, if they don't fix this.
And then I'll make a different motion.
Okay, we have a withdrawal motion. Do you second the withdrawal?
David.
David?
You second my withdrawal?
Yeah.
Okay, and now you have a, you'd like to make another motion?
That I would like to direct, um, the administration to pursue a part-time person in addition to pursuing additional quotes from commercial cleaners, um, in an effort to get this position filled in a cost-effective manner.
I'll second that. Yay!
We, we would almost hope that as we, the senior center opens, it gets busy, we hire another part-time person to do it. The department itself can maintain some of the building itself, too.
Well, but not necessarily, like, the, you don't want the person who's running the programs to be cleaning the toilet.
No, 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 I'm just saying, though, as a whole.
In some parts, but you're still gonna need cleaning. And in my opinion, you know? And they're not gonna have authority with our motion to do anything. They still have to come to us. This is just to broaden their scope for finding oper-, options.
So, I'm sorry, could you just repeat the motion again?
Cynthia?
I keep hearing and...
Yeah, right. This is awesome. My motion is to direct, um, city council, or administration, city administration, to expand the scope of the search for cleaning services, um, to pursue the potential for hiring a part-time person while also pursu-, pursuing additional commercial cleaners. I, I can't, I don't know.
Ed, turn it off, please.
God, okay. Why don't we take a two-minute break?
Take care of the problem.
We'll take a ten-minute break.
Thank you.
I saw the whole action. I saw the full action.
I saw the whole action. I saw the full action. Why you got, why you think they're renowned the way they are?
Check one, two. Check one, two. Check one, two. Check one, two. Check, check, check. Check one, two. Check one, two. Check one, two. Check one, two. Check, check, check. Check one, two.
It's coming, why is it coming?
Check one, two. Check one, two. Check, check, check.
Why is it trying back? Black magic is on. Speaker coming out. Black magic is on. Speaker coming out.
Check one, two. Check. Check one, two.
I paused the meeting Zoom until it was on, because it was recording everything.
Yeah, that's good.
And David, when you got a call, it said, oh, the phones are picking up, and everything was being recorded, so...
Yeah, yeah, and that's because I'm testing, um, yeah, that's good. Check, two, check. Check, two. Zoom is sending back, yeah, it's sending back. Our feed, it's always supposed to send the people on Zoom there, so...
But why does it stop for what? It's, it's not...
Because I've been turning it off. So, we, so we... Well, that's because I was turning it on and off.
Oh.
Yeah, um, when I saw him talking, then I would turn it on.
Okay, well, let me know when you want me to do this.
No, I agree. When I saw him talking, then I would turn it on.
Parks and Rec was in charge of our city events that we had, like Christmas in Frazier, our parade, our Easter egg hunt, Fall Fest. All those have been gone by the wayside for the last two years. And my, you know, opinion, I feel that Parks and Rec, you know, I met a lot of friends, neighbors, watching my kids play T-ball, watching them do different activities. It brings the community together. It's one of the main reasons I ran for council. I don't want to live in the city without these services. And pretty much every resident that I talked to going door to door echoed the same thing. So I feel if we're going to get our summer programming back, we need to act now to get this going and not kick it down the road further and further, or else we're going to have another summer with no activities for the city and for our kids and for our seniors. I'm glad the senior center is open, but it's only part-time. I stopped in there the other day and they already got a full slate of activities going there, so they want more. So I think as a city, we should give them more. So I think it is time to act now, and I would like to put out a motion to direct the city manager, whom she would appoint, to develop a plan to reopen the Frazier Parks and Recreation Department with the following deliverables. That one, we hire and have a full-time Parks and Recreation Director to oversee our parks and recreation programming, as well as senior center programming, no later than March 11th. Two, I want the said director to have outdoor parks and recreation and additional senior programmings in place, no later than June 1st, 2022. Like to have at least a minimum of five programs for children five and under, six to 10, teens, adults, and senior, seniors. I also want that said director to develop COVID restrictive programming for all age groups as alternative in case we have COVID hotspots come back and need to adjust. And then that said director would also be in charge of creating plans for our farmer's market, Fall Fest, city parade, Christmas in Frazier, and other to-be-determined events, including but not limited to vendor outreach and vendor fee schedules. So I'd like, that is my motion, and I would like to get that going.
Just a question. Patrick, on your motion to appoint a person or pick a person, as we talked about, would that, could that be a subcommittee of people targeting to start looking for the right person to put in that seat? Or how do you see that coming to fruition, just start a search blindly and just say, this is what we want to do and start the parks up?
Well, I think we need a director that has some experience in this matter. I'm not opposed to the manager putting together a committee to see what type of programming that we want. I think that, being that we have no employees in that department, a person coming in has a clean slate to work with. We can reimagine different events. And I think a committee, you know, with the city manager and maybe a couple council members and some Parks and Rec people could help guide that. But I think we need to get the search going on now for a director to run it full-time, and we can develop those programings so they're up and running by June 1st.
This director would start off as a part-time position to grow the plan and work itself into a full-time position, or how do you see that?
I prefer a full-time position because I don't, I have not seen any evidence from any other communities that a part-time director is going to get the results that we want. And I believe in the past, we've had part-time directors and they have gone to other communities once they got some experience. I think if you're going to get the quality of individual that you need to run a citywide program like this, I think it needs to be a full-time professional.
Okay. Mayor Protem Shornak, you are next.
Well, I don't have a problem starting the search, but before that, I don't know, we, I mean, and I know we have all new management, but we had asked repeatedly, our Parks and Recs director at the time, for numbers of, you know, what programs were working, how many people were participating and everything. We never ever got that information. So the only information I heard was from individuals on Parks and Rec that a ton of programs got canceled, and this was before COVID. And then we had asked, we had asked to have ideas for programs that could be done virtually during all this, and then that's why we disbanded it at this point. That's why we put a hold on everything. So I don't have a problem, because I know trying to find qualified anybody for anything is an act of God these days, because it seems like nobody wants to work. But that being said, I don't have a problem with starting the search for somebody, but I do agree with the mayor that it should start as a position that could be moved into full-time, because right now, especially with COVID being, you know, still out of control, there's very limited things that people are going to participate in. So that's why, like, whoever's going to be over the senior center, and that position will end up being full-time, but it'll start off part-time. I have no doubt about that, because right now, until there is a clear understanding of how things will work, and because we don't have any historical data from the last, well, obviously not the last two years, but prior to that, we don't know what was working and what wasn't working. And believe me, my kids did Parks and Rec sports too, so I'm not adverse to it at all, but I'm saying, we definitely have to take this in steps. So if it means having a three-person team and then deciding what the criteria is going to be, I'm good with that too, because I do want Parks and Recs to come back. But right now, I'm not okay with hiring a full-time person, because there's not enough for a full-time person to do.
I would respectfully disagree.
And that's cool.
And Roseville, my kids started baseball at Roseville Junior Sports. We had enough, football was very active this year. Like I say, our neighboring communities are getting it. They're probably getting some of our kids, because our kids don't have those activities. I've even reached out to Roseville Junior Sports that, you know, for example, T-ball, they would have their teams play with our teams, you know? So if we only can field two teams, for example, that they could play in a league with other kids, you know, they're open to that. So I think where there's a will, there's a way. I agree, some of the programs may not have been as active in the past. I think a new person with new ideas and experience can come in and reimagine this program and probably bring ideas from other successful programs and develop some great programs going forward. But I think it needs to be, needs to be started, and, you know, I want to start with outdoor programming, so that's a lot less COVID, you know, risk adverse. So that's why I'm starting it in the summertime that I want to start.
Councilwoman Blanke?
Thank you. I don't, Pat, I don't disrespect anything you're saying. I too, I love recreation, it was a major part of my life. And I'm speaking from a long time of experience. I, I'm not reminiscing, I'm being factual here. This is not the kind of program, it isn't like a county or, you know, that you can just flip a switch on, or like the building department or something. You can't just hire a staff and turn a switch on or off. Your clientele, the people that you are servicing, are the people that make or break the programs. And before, I would agree to, I completely echo what Mayor Protem Shornak said. We have to look at data, we have to look at what, like you said, you, and it's noble. You bring your children to Roseville Sports, okay? And a lot of people do there, or Clinton Township, because you want the best for your children. I understand that. But the reality is, we have to, we don't have a good name for recreation right now. You know, we had closed it down, I believe, in 17? Was it 17?
No.
No, before that, we did, didn't we?
Budget cuts, 17.
For a month or so, just a month or so.
I know we had problems filling, I think once we tried to do T-ball, we could only fill not even one team registered to do that.
And tragically, that's where a lot of the disconnect was, because people did what, like you did with your children, they went to another community. So we have to build up our reputation again. I, I don't know what the answer is, because I can't, apples and oranges during my time and my generation and what we did was different, but I am a firm believer in recreation, certainly. But I think it has to be more of a data-based, more of a survey, see what the residents want, see if you have that softball. Are you going to have 60 kids for T-ball? Are you going to guarantee 40 kids, say 40, you know, for four teams to compete? And then if you're not, then we just, what, we would have to cancel the class? And then what, we have a full-time person, you know, without a substantial job description? So I'm all for it. I'll help in any way to recreate it, but it isn't something that we can just put, do on paper. We need people's cooperation and their approval of what would be attempted to do. Thank you. Okay?
I think another important thing I mentioned to, that the city manager and our management has to do is look at all of our assets for our recreation, see what we have. I mean, a lot of the stuff is so old, so...
Like Patrice.
No good. I mean, it could take thousands of dollars just to reboot, getting the equipment and stuff like that, so we, you know, and I'm all for it too, is getting this recreation back, but getting it better than what it was before. Make it really good programs, but most important thing, it's got to kind of pay for itself. The city can't be subsidizing a department like in the past, at one point, you know, it was $200,000, $300,000, the city was subsidizing recreation, and it's just not fair to all the other taxpayers in the city to keep doing that, so I'm all for it, let's do it and do it right the first time, put the right people in the right seat, but it's going to take some good planning to make this work. And with good plans, we can make it work, but if we just shoot from the hip, you know, failure is going to be more prevalent than it not, so. Councilwoman Sutherland?
So, it doesn't sound to me, though, like Councilmember Odell's motion is shooting from the hip. It sounds to me like it's strategic, it's got definitely specific deliverables, and it would be within the allocated budget for this year. To echo what he said, I also, in the recent election, heard from many residents that what they're looking for is our recreation program back. And I think that what he's proposing is a good fundamental approach that we could build upon, right, to make sure that it is this phoenix at some point going forward. But without starting and doing something and talking about it, I mean, we're just going to have more time that's going to go by and items and services and events that are going to suffer. Sarah did a great job with Christmas in Frazier. I don't know how much time you spent on that, but I would assume that it was probably quite a bit when she wasn't over cleaning the bathrooms, right, at the senior center. But even between that, as well as the amount of time that, you know, coming off of the Parks and Recreation Commission that I spent during the summer on the farmer's market, I mean, between Hunter and myself, that definitely was at least one day of work a week, just for what we had. That doesn't include any additional, like if we would have had a petting zoo, or if we would have had a dance troupe come in, like, this was bare bones, farmer's market this year, what Hunter and I were able to put together. And like I said, it was at least one day of work a week. We have talked in the Parks and Recreation Commission meetings recently about surveys, both a park survey to go out, because right now, the Parks and Recreation Commission is about to be operating without a five-year plan. So putting out surveys to the community, and Elaine was supposed to be, I believe, she's not here, but we can follow up on that, working on getting those surveys out to the community. The park survey is done. It was drafted, the commission agreed on it, it's ready to go. A recreation survey, I don't think would be that hard to get out also, so that we can, in tandem, get some programs started for the summer, because we would have to start now while gathering that information to go forward. In addition to that, I want to say it was, let's see, when did Vince leave? October? So it had to have been July, I think. The Parks and Recreation Commission did individually provide a comprehensive list to Vince of both in-person as well as virtual programming ideas. And we tried to do that in a way of having things that were also, would be unique to our city, so that hopefully some of these programs could fund themselves, because other cities don't have them, like archery. I don't know if you can go to St. Clair Shores or Roseville to get archery, but so that we would be able to draw in people from other cities that would want to come here, so that we wouldn't have to worry about not being able to fund these programs. I think that Mr. Odell's motion is a good first step.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, now's the time to start talking, for sure. I agree 100%. Councilwoman Baranski?
Yes, so it's clear we're all in consensus, and this has always been the plan, to use this, so first of all, Parks and Rec actually got closed a year ago in the fall. It was open, we were paying an employee to do the job. Seven pumpkins got colored, and she was making a lot of money. That is not sustainable $457,000 justification for a department. End of discussion, in my opinion. And that's why I supported what has happened. But that being said, I don't think it needs to be fully self-sustaining, I do think that some tax dollars should do it, but it certainly should not be the type of loss that it has been. The question I have, when you hire anyone full-time, is you're not hiring them for just now, or hiring them for forever. And we are operating with a $250,000 budget deficit every year. PA 33, every year, if, and then you want to add. So, and this is only for the summer, because the question, and we talked to a resident did reach out to us, what happens in the fall? Unfortunately, and this is not our doing, and no one on this council did it, we cannot have senior, or, I'm sorry, children's programs at the senior center. That changes everything, and that is something we can't get past. I know they were trying to work with the schools, but I know firsthand, the schools aren't letting anyone in, so they're not going to give us their gyms, and now, coupled with Oxford and everything else, unfortunately. What are we envisioning? And I don't mean we, the seven, because it isn't us, we're the policymakers, but at the same time, how are you envisioning what this person's going to do in a full-time capacity in the fall? Because, again, this is Public Act 33, this is tax dollars above and beyond, and that's why I am, I have ideas, I want to get volleyball pits, because other cities, their volleyball, sand volleyball programs, sold out, kickball, adult kickball, all those things, I'm 100%, but we don't need a full-time person for that, but we do need to get going on that. I was anticipating and hopeful that with the success that we've had with the senior center, unfortunately, what has also come up is COVID has reared its ugly head within the city. And when we're dealing with that, and people getting it, and the cleanings and the closings, and what does that mean? And this isn't, you know, start it and go, you know, two steps forward, two steps back, so I'm not in favor of hiring anyone full-time because of Public Act 33 monies being used. I campaigned on that, I have advocated for that. The plan that was put together with the assistance of Amy Sell to take four department heads and put them under one umbrella, so that we don't have a department head over one or two people, that doesn't make sense. That's not how you run a business. We had all of these chiefs and, you know, middle management, so to speak, and that's a lot of money. And then, we didn't even talk about the legacy costs that are above and beyond this $250,000. So to me, I've envisioned exactly what is happening, which was now Sarah and, you know, the senior person under her, someone under the recreation department, we should use the right terminology, and I am just as guilty as anyone, under the recreation, to start this, and we should be having these conversations. I had already reached out about the possibility of using some of the COVID money to put in the volleyball pit, so this summer, boom, it'll be self-sustaining and it'll make a profit. But, so that's my thoughts, because what are we going to do in the fall? Where are they going to play? How are we going to pay for it? And then circle back to kind of the lingering question, which I was hoping we would resolve, is the role that the recreation commission plays in all of this, which is, we're waiting on Don for a legal opinion, and I know you got busy with a lot of other stuff, and then most important of all, the master plan, because that's supposed to decide for the city what recreation looks like, right? And it's not put together by, you know, you and I, it's a important, it's not a legal document, but it's an important city document, and that is something that should be put together. And so my concern with your motion is, A, full-time, and then the specific directives, because I like where you're going, I want to see action, I want to, you know, but to say five programs, so what, if they don't have five programs, are they fired? What does that mean? And then, to me, that becomes micromanaging, because I don't want to get into their business, but I do want to have things. So that's where I'm at.
Mayor Protem Shornak?
Just a question. I don't know, Cindy, you and Elaine and Sarah, I know we're working on our website, hopefully we're making some progress, I haven't looked at it recently, but can we put a survey monkey out? I mean, those are pretty easy to do, and then we can really push it out there to the community, put it on the channel, put it on the roly-poly, put it on the outside thing, you know, basically telling people, hey, we want to hear from our community, what programs would you like us to see? What programs would you and your children participate in? Because I think that's the biggest thing. We want, we don't want to try to start a bunch of programs and then have like four or five people show up, because that's what was happening. A lot of that was happening. So we want programs that'll be successful, but that the community will also enjoy. So is that something that we could do?
Probably. I can't guarantee, I've not done that, have you done survey monkey?
We had actually talked to some extent about this at our Recreation Commission discussion on Tuesday, we didn't have quorum, so we unofficially just threw around ideas for a little bit. There is talk, we want to have a survey monkey up there. I am trying to get regularly scheduled posting on the Facebook page, because we have seen a lot of traffic flow, and with regular posting getting us more visible to the community will hopefully in the long run help with doing better with our programming. We do have some things that I've put out there that are at no cost. We've had a great success even with the picture event, to have people send a picture of what their alpha's doing at home. There was some discussion, I think I spoke with you at the center and during our meeting about doing virtual programming, they have a lot of program where it's, you know, kids dancing, coding, anything that you can do through WebEx, through a portal called Out School, and we may be able to get that through a grant, so it's at no cost and available for our residents. And doing things like that, that are COVID-friendly and somewhat winter break-friendly for parents and the weather, I think is a good reintroduction for the program, because we don't have the facility. It's been hard with residents reaching out, are we going to have floor hockey, and having to tell them, I can't give you the gym, we're not going to be able to do that, we're looking for space. But definitely, the goal is to continue to have more visibility. The audit unfortunately tied up a lot of my November, so with, I'll be in throughout the holidays, and that's really the goal, is to have something scheduled every day within that Facebook. We are seeing 1,000 to 2,000 people interacting with each post on a daily basis, so even if it's just, you know, GFL extended the leaves, our Facebook, trying to include not just the senior center, not just regular recreation, but city information, has been proving to be very fruitful with the Facebook for our recreation page.
Good. That's important, to know, you know, in, more programs are successful, the bigger it's going to get, the more popular it's going to get, the reputation's going to come back in the city too, and that's how it's going to grow and be successful, so. But as it was, there were so many good ideas last year, and a lot of them weren't done, but some of them were done. We didn't, we never understood why they weren't successful. You only get four people who showed up, but why? Did it not get sent to the right people? Is it the wrong age group? But there's reasons why it didn't work, but some of them were really good ideas, but council just really never got much feedback on that, so communication on this is going to be absolutely, you know, vital too going forward, but the biggest hang-up, I think, right now is that word of hiring full-time people for it, when it's just now in development stages and going to figure it all out. And, like I said, that's the toughest thing to bite at this point. Maybe, maybe the committee, or maybe three or four people start this, start the conversations, get the ball rolling, but that conversation happens, you know, a month, two months from now, decide, you know, what programs we're going to try, what we're not going to try, location, how's COVID then, you know, is it going away? Is it still getting bad? So there's a lot of unknowns here, but when you hire somebody, it's like, as someone said, it's kind of forever, you want that person to be, you don't want to hire somebody and then say, sorry, it's not working out three months from now, because, you know, COVID and we can't get people to come to the programs and stuff like that too, so. There's a lot of making it successful, so. Yeah. Someone's other one?
So, I hear what you're saying, Amy, too, about as far as having the space for indoor activities. And we do have the room over here, right at City Hall, I don't know what it used to be used for, but there's a room like right off of the old dispatch room, like walk in the door right over there to the right.
District court.
Is that what, the district court? So, I mean, my kids took coding in there, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty big room to do at least some start of programming, coding, crafting, you could even fit a little teeny tiny zumba class in there or something, even if you had to stack events. So if you had like zumba classes from three to five on Thursdays, or you have three to four, four to five, that's two classes where maybe, you know, depending on COVID, you could have five, 10 kids, who knows? I just think that there's, I mean, there's a desire, we're hearing the voice, and that we've just got to get more going. So if the, if the concern is hiring a full-time person, I mean, we also have more that we can, I guess we can be more top-heavy, I guess, during the summer, we've got tennis courts, we've got baseball diamonds, maybe volleyball courts. I mean, we're going to be able to do things where maybe in the slower months, it could be more preparation for what those summer months look like, and/or we can extend further into the fall, or start earlier in the spring. I think that, you know, there are certain things, like the Summer Parks Program, you know, that was something that for me as a parent, when my son was little, I don't know what I would have done for childcare without that Summer Parks Program. So there are things like that, that I think that a full-time person could work on that are missing in the community, that, that people, they depend on. There was a lot of kids in that park program, and if you're, you know, single parent or married, and you don't have somebody to watch your kids, I mean, that's a huge benefit. I think that there would be enough work to keep a full-time person busy. Now whether or not they're a director, that, maybe we could have more talk about that, maybe they're not a director, maybe they're just a full-time Parks and Recreation person. But as far as hiring someone full-time and getting some of these deliverables done, I honestly think we need to get it going like yesterday.
Go ahead, Odell. Councilwoman O'Dell?
We did part-time before, it didn't work. We lost our, we lost prior directors because of that. We had our last assistant city manager do Parks and Recs, it was a disaster. Parks and Rec Commission banging their head against the wall, they could tell you that. It's a leap of faith, it's, we get someone, they get, their full-time job is getting that programming done, following up. You're not going to get that with a part-time person. You're not going to get that with someone that's not committed. In my opinion, it doesn't work without a full-time person. If you want to call them full-time, you know, amend the motion where it's just a full-time Parks and Rec employee, and then if they do a good job, they turn into, they go into the director, I'm fine with that. But we need someone on this full-time to make it successful. If it's half-time, it's not going to work. Same thing with the senior programming, they can help out with the senior programming and get that up and going too. That can be year-round stuff to make up in the wintertime, and, lost my train of thought there, but the need is there. The need is there, the residents want these programs. Further we kick it down the road, I mean, we're not Parks and Rec experts, we're not senior center experts, we're citizens up here, it's not our full-time job, we can have a rough idea, but getting somebody with some experience is going to bring new ideas to the table. I love reinventing some of our past programs, but if we continue kicking it down the road, our residents are going to suffer because of this. But I do have a motion out.
No, one second.
Well, if I could, I want to say one, one last thing on this. Patrice, I think you make a really good point, right, where it's hard to find people right now, right? It's hard to find quality candidates. So I think that would be another concern of mine with hiring a part-time person, would be, how are we going to find a qualified candidate who would be willing to come to the city to work part-time on the off chance that maybe they'll go full-time? I mean, even if Mr. Odell amends his motion to not have it be a director, and it's a full-time Parks and Recreation person, then they could work into the director role, but if someone has the skills and abilities right now, they're currently working full-time, and we're trying to create a role... and we're trying to create a role for someone who wants to come here and do it for opportunity or whatever it might be, I think we'd be hard-pressed to find someone to come and work part-time on the off chance that maybe they'll go full-time.
I don't know. We've even tested the market. I don't even know what a part-time or a full-time or a part-time recreation person would be going through with this salary range. I mean, what's, so there's a lot of unknowns. But again, I want to emphasize, I agree 1,000%, we got to get going. But, you know, in my opinion, we have to, there's a lot of work that needs to be done before setting the bar exactly with how we're going to man it at this point. But, and I, and I have no problem putting a full-time person in that position. Once the plans, once everything's set, we know what we're doing. And that person's going to be a vital part to do that. But, you know, I, I have no information in front of me whatsoever. And that's, I guess, what's, I'm hoping the first month, two months, we can actually get a lot of that data, get, get that data back to us and look at it and make a real good decision based off of that. So that's kind of what I told Mr. Odell in our conversation we had. So.
Mr. Winawicki.
There's no doubt that everyone on this council wants to see recreation activities pick back up. There's no doubt. I mean, I think everyone's expressed that. What we're lacking is we're lacking enough data, as several members have said. We're lacking the data to figure out what is that program going to look like. And I think it's premature to think that we hire someone without having that data, without having a clear plan in place. We are right now, we're three members shy on the Recreation Commission. And through Tuesday's meeting, there was some hinting and some inference that there, we might soon to be four members shy. So if we have, according to charter, an established commission appointed people to act as advisors to council, we're already down three. We might be down four. We go down four. We don't have a quorum. We don't have a group. We don't have anything. So I think we need to start there. Let's get the commission back up, fully staffed, fully appointed. Let's get the data, figure out exactly what it is. COVID changed this world. And businesses have changed all of their business practices. There are more people working from home. Schools were affected. School programs were operating at diminished levels. There, there was, and I think one of the football teams did not have enough participation in high school football. And, and so if we don't have a high school football team, how is this city going to kind of reenact things that we need to reinvent and revitalize? But we don't have the data. Councilmember Odell and Councilwoman Sutherland said on their door-to-door walking, that was a huge talking point from residents. I also did a lot of walking. And I heard quite the opposite. I heard things like, I would rather see more public safety officers out there. And I'm not that concerned about the Recreation Commission. We know you're going to bring it back when COVID settles down. But right now, COVID's not settling down. It's, it's surging again. And we're about to get more restrictions. So let's find out what the people really want. And let's, let's get the surveys done. Let's get some data. And then we can make an informed decision. I, I don't think hiring someone right now, either part-time or full-time, is the right thing to do.
Councilwoman Baranski.
A question, I guess, is, and you kind of trumped it a little bit, like, because we're, we're talking about full-time, part-time, but perhaps a better question, at least from my perspective, is what salary range are you thinking for this person, this, you call them a director, but like, what were you envisioning, you know, was the line item for that salary? If you had one, and maybe you don't, I don't.
For a director, I think a reasonable salary, depending on experience, obviously.
Of course.
Probably between 45 and 60 range.
Okay. So I don't spend any money on leap of faith. And I get where you're coming from because you do need someone to lead. But to me, and she's only been here a month, and she's already led in so many ways, and that's what Sarah's job is. And, and so in that regard, we've now been open a month in the Senior Center. How many people are we seeing come through the door? How are they, are they pounding down the doors like we were told they were gonna? Are we getting 10? Are we getting 1? What are we getting?
We have a pretty regular pickleball group that comes in. So I would say there's possibly up to 10 in there. And that, we also have cards going on on a regular basis. Depending on what the schedule is, our blue room does get pretty filled up between cards and puzzles. We did just start aerobics in our meeting room. So that is, I believe, one day a week. And we're hoping to have bingo come back. So as programs increase, we are seeing more people utilizing the service, but there is definitely room to grow with that. I'm only there about an hour a day with Diane. So unfortunately, I don't have good set numbers on what's going on. But we are seeing increased, not only utilization of the facility, but more interest in the ridership and our busing service as well, which is housed out of there.
Good, yeah. So, I mean, do we have any estimate? Are we seeing, you know, are we seeing 40 people a day? Are we seeing, and obviously, and it's going to grow as word gets out.
It varies depending on what's going on. We did add a volleyball league, and that is going to be, with that group, I would see at least 10 people, if not more, on a daily basis for that. So each program has its niche of regular attendees at the facility. It's just scattered throughout the day.
Perfect. And so what you're seeing is, as you started on this part-time, and then you build and you grow and you're advertising, and it's.
There's more people. We did get a more set calendar out this week. I worked with Diane to have our programming more flushed out. And I do think we see probably 20 to 30 at minimum a day, just from our regular attendees in some of those programs.
Okay. And then the only other thing I would say, because I agree about the important need for surveys, but we can't rely just on social media. We can't rely on just what people say on Facebook. Because the one thing I learned when I campaigned two times, when I campaigned for Public Act 33, more than anything, is how many people are not on social media and are not aware. They didn't know basic things like that. We have public safety, that they do three things, and that, that we're implementing Public Act 33, and they're charging them, like, because they're not on social media. And not that the people on social media are not important, but I don't want a skewed set of facts. Because as much as we all know, yeah, I'll come, yeah, I'll come, yeah, I'll come. And guess what? When you're there waiting for volunteers, it's you and you and me and you and, and her, for sure. And you're like, where's all these people? So I just want to make sure, whatever we do, we try to capture a realistic expectation because this is our dollars above and beyond our, our homeowners, I mean, our, you know, our taxes. So that's, so at that point, I guess, I guess I'll call the question. But no one's seconded the motion. I'm assuming you're.
Well.
I was just going to go, two more. And Sarah, you're, you're doing it the right way, it looks like. I mean, you're slowly implementing programs and growth and seeing how you're going to fit it and manage it. You're just not going 10 programs and seeing what you're doing. So you're, I think you're doing it the right way, and that's good. And I think this is how kind of, how we have to do it, too. And for the recreation is, pick the programs that we think are going to be the most successful going forward. So go ahead, Dana.
So Councilmember Blankey made a really good point earlier today when we were talking about the Janice King Agreement, right? That we don't want to micromanage everything, and that it's their job to figure out what's going to do. So I think that that's one of the things that I also like about this motion, is even though that there are some deliverables that could potentially be amended, right? What the motion first stated was to direct Elaine or whoever she deems, you know, or directs to find someone to do this, so that we aren't coming up with a subcommittee to micromanage all of this. We are finding someone, whether it's a director or a level down within that salary range, or whether there's a range that we give to Sarah, because she's wearing a lot of hats right now, so that Elaine and Sarah can work together to find this person, so that we aren't micromanaging every step of the process. They know that we would like surveys. They know that we would like more data. But like, let's get it going by getting someone in there. So I don't know if you're going to, if you'd like to modify your motion, or.
Just to be clear, the subcommittee is not to hire somebody, not, the subcommittee is to get the.
But just to gather.
Get the data.
Yes.
Which the council needs to make those decisions. That's all it is.
They don't know that.
Putting the heads together who know more about it than anybody, and putting those heads together and coming up with a plan. And that's all it is. It's, it's, believe me, I'm not, I'm not a recreation person.
Right.
At all. But I, I know that when it's run right, it's very successful. And Fraser has had some of the best, I played 35 years of baseball here.
Yep. But I don't know that we should make the plan to, to counsel.
We're not going to make the plan.
Right? We're going to hire somebody.
Right.
To get the data, to make the plan.
But you have to have a good plan going forward of what you want. That's all.
Right. And then that, that's what that person would.
So you're suggesting amending how?
It's your motion.
But no one seconded it. That's.
No one seconded it.
Right. No one's asked for a second.
You had mentioned that you, you might want to amend it from a director.
I could amend it from a director to a Parks and Rec employee. That, that would
Full-time Parks and Recreation.
Correct.
Okay. I don't want the words in your mouth. So.
Nope.
Want to make your.
Everything, read it through all again. Okay.
I'm going to do that if.
Got it tight for you.
Councilmember Odell, at the end of the meeting tonight, if I could get a copy of that motion, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
All right. So I'll reread the motion. I'll try to be quick. "To direct the city manager whom she would appoint to develop a plan to reopen the Fraser Parks and Recreation Department with the following deliverables. One, hire and have in position a full-time Parks and Recreation employee to oversee Parks and Recreation as well as the Senior Center programming by March 11, 2022. Two, said director will have outdoor Parks and Recreation and additional senior programming in place, available no later than June 1, 2022, with a minimum of five programs each for children five and under, six to 10, teens, adults, and seniors. Three, said director will develop COVID-restricted programming for all age groups as an alternative in case COVID restrictions return. And four, said director will create plans for the 2022 Farmer's Market, Fall Fest, City Parade, Christmas in Fraser, and other to-be-determined special events in the city, including but not limited to vendor outreach and better fee schedules."
Second.
Motion second. Mr. Denal.
Sorry, I have a question for the maker of the motion. Because I'm trying to follow it and, and its specificity. Mr. Odell, is your motion to authorize or direct the city management to create a plan that would ultimately result in those deliverables? Or is your motion to direct city management to create a plan and deliver those deliverables? I'm not clear.
Create a plan and deliver those.
And deliver those.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Blankey.
Since it was put in the form of a motion, Mr. Denal, I have a question for you. According to the charter and that, and it, it's a common mistake people make, and we're defining a department, that department is actually the Recreation Department, correct?
You're going to love this answer.
I hope so.
Here comes the legalese.
I hope so.
I have been pondering this question since probably 2018. We do not, I have asked prior city clerks. I haven't asked Cindy. I don't know how the Parks and Recreation Department was created. I can't figure it out. I mean, there's no, there's no ordinance. There's no charter provision. There's nothing that creates this department. It must have been in many years back, a council directive or an administrative decision to just create this thing we call the Department of the City and start running it and have a director of it. But there's no ordinance. There's no charter provision at all that I could ever find that creates anything called Parks and Rec or Recreation Department. It just doesn't exist. Now, we do have an ordinance from 1968 that created a Recreation Commission. So somebody was thinking about it. And maybe that was the same time period. Or maybe something came of that commission where at some point, council or administration said, great, commission's given us the plan, the roadmap. We're going to have a department that manages that, perhaps. That's how it all came about. Might have been a resolution. We'd have to go through really old minutes to try to find it. I, but that's the answer I have for you is, the misconception is that we even have this department created in an ordinance book, and we don't. It, it may have been created. I'm not saying it wasn't. But I have no evidence of when that happened or how.
And Dan, then why in the past was the Recreation Director always picked and appointed by the council? You remember that?
I also cannot answer that question.
They didn't follow the rules.
Other than because so many other directors and department heads by charter are council appointments. The person deciding to, to move forward with this particular type of department probably thought it's best to get council to bless it. And then it just continued and continued and continued.
I remember in the past that when some people wanted just to give that position, they couldn't. It had to be approved by council to give that position.
Right.
That position was a council position, just like the city manager and.
Right. And the only way, Mr. Mayor, for that to happen would be if there was an ordinance or a resolution or something that created that department and said, this appointee is a charter officer. It isn't just a city management appointment. And that doesn't exist, at least that I can find. And I don't, I don't know if that matters for the long-term, the bigger-picture discussion we're having. It's just a little piece of trivia. There's, there's nothing.
Always good with the trivia.
Welcome to the landmines we have been finding.
Right.
Well, I, I think I have a thought on this as much as the definition. MML and DNR and all them, they encompass Parks and Recreation. I think probably 50, 60% of communities, it's combined, the parks and the recreation. Somewhere around the 80s, like you just suggested, there was an ordinance created that took out the parks. Because then it went to, I mean, yes, it went to the DPW. They, they were then in charge of the budget, renovations, keeping things up, you know, that kind of thing, where we were isolated as a recreation department, you know? So I don't know if that means anything. And Mr. Odell, the only reason I threw that out there was to validate your motion. What, I always, we always referred to it as recreation. But like you said, we could have called it Disney World. I don't know. And it sounds like there's no order here. But I just wanted to say that for clarification, that recreation really has nothing to do with the parks. It's strictly recreation. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
We approach them, Sharnet.
Yeah, I just had a question for Amy Sall really, because I know that we had originally hired a part-time person for the Senior Activity Center. So have you had any other applications even for that position?
We have had applications, and we are in the process of following up and doing pre-interviews. Many of the applications, it's not clear that they're going to be a good fit. So we're trying to do our due diligence. We're getting ghosted with a few things, as they say, because of the tight labor market. I can provide feedback that some of the candidates that we have been in touch with, when they found out about that it was part-time, or when it was confirmed to them that it was part-time with no potential to be full-time, that was a deterrent. So I would be more optimistic about a full-time position, especially if it could be maybe combined with the position that we're currently looking to fill. There could be an opportunity there.
See, that was my thought process. Because, again, I want Parks and Recs to get started. So what I, what I was thinking, more or less, is to hire that person as a full-time individual who, right now, would help with both of those departments. And as they develop what they're going to, their hope of what Mr. Odell wants for our Parks and Rec, then they can go ahead and start those, start that process. I would not be adverse to that. And then if it comes to the fact where the Parks, the, or the Recreation Department takes off, right? And so then we can go back to looking for a part-time person, more or less for the Senior Activity Center. That, I, I would be okay with that particular thing. I think, I think your agenda of what you want to happen is great. I think it's a great starting point. And I also agree that we don't want to micromanage, because I got to tell you, I hate micromanaging. Hate it. And so in, and from what you're saying, that would be an easier position to fill anyway. But that person would understand that. For right now, that person would be taking care of two departments under Sarah. I think that would. I think that would be a better fit at this time for our city to start the process and moving forward. And this way we can have the two departments because I know Recreation was taking care of those two departments before COVID.
Another option, if I could be so bold, would be to maybe suggest getting a summer intern at the college level to help out in the summer when it sounds like you might have more demand. That might be a nice labor pool to tap into, to provide some additional support at a reasonable cost and in a temporary basis.
Well, I think, Amy, if you go back to one of our conversations a few months ago when we were talking about with Vincent and other people, that I, I did talk about that hybrid position, kind of doing both those jobs together with one person. And because going off what you wanted to do, what you did, but do it a little bit different is that one person would operate both those departments and, and manage one of them and then have someone who we needed if they needed part-time to fill those follow-up positions part-time only. But that would be the handling the Senior Center and Recreation Department. It was both jobs.
Yeah, are you saying, are you saying that's what you thought?
Yeah.
Kind of when, when we talked about this, that was always our envision, but then because of COVID, we were like, well, let's get the Senior Center open.
And then a couple of months ago, when we, you and I even talked about, you know, doing that and making the hybrid position even a little bit more dynamic is focused just on the two departments alone, not three or four different things. Like Vincent had so many different things. It was just-
Well, it was someone to report under the-
Right.
Person, though, not a-
Right.
Not reinventing what we had, which is all those-
Exactly.
Chiefs and no Indians.
Right. So that's why I said it's taking the time and-
Agreed.
Different options to, okay, now if we could put one full-time position, person, and that person's gonna manage the Recreation, now you're looking for a person who does that because Recreation kind of Senior Activities kind of go together.
Yeah, 100%. Yeah.
If you think about it, it's all about Recreation. It's all about entertainment, getting the best programs for different age levels of people. That's all it is. You know, putting those ideas together. So I would really like to see a hybrid position, maybe doing that, two positions and cover it with one person. Because we're getting more bang for our buck. And if one gets slow, especially in the wintertime, and if things get slow with the parks, well, guess what? Senior Center in wintertime, you can just pack it with all kinds of different things to keep them busy. I mean, you could have a free hot chocolate day and you'll fill the place.
So true.
You know what I'm saying? So that-
I know. That's so true.
I'll even make the cookies. But no, you could. I mean, with a, with a position like that, to me, that's very similar. You're being a little bit fiscally responsible, spreading that money out a little bit and sharing those funds between two departments. So I'd like to see maybe even that numbers put together and see what it would take to do.
Yeah, I mean, my, my motion said for to hire the, to oversee Parks and Recreation as well as Senior Center programming, so-
Well, but when you make the motion like that and we pass it and we have to do that, that's what we have to do. So it's, it would change the whole scope of going back and say, okay, now we're not gonna do that and we're gonna have to change it. And it's just, that's why I said if we put our heads together and think about things, that we can probably put a pretty good plan together as far as getting to where we want to go, but-
So should we call the question? There's a motion and a second.
Right. So we can call the question and we can go from there. I mean, there's always, you can change your motion and change a couple of things in it or, you know, we can talk further about like what I said or-
I, I 100% support that hybrid position covering the Senior Center and Parks and Rec. That, that is, that is fine by me and-
We do have a motion and we do have a second. I will go ahead and call the question. Is there any comments from the audience first?
Suzanne Kalka, 1-5504, White Oak. So I just want to remind council that when we hired Amy about two years ago, she put together the plan for our hierarchy for this, for the city. And part of that hierarchy for this city is we were going to have an assistant city manager that was gonna be in charge of the Parks and Rec. I know that COVID hit and I know that it's been, you know, a terrible set of circumstances. But if Vince had not decided that he wasn't the right person for that particular job, we would be much farther along today. I say, given the circumstances, have Amy, have Sarah, have Elaine come together and talk about the plan going forward for next meeting and have that discussion and then put it together. Right now, we're kind of all over the place. We're starting this discussion, which is amazing and great. But I think that if we decide to adopt this particular motion, I think it's micromanaging. We have Amy. We have Sarah here now. We have Elaine. We have done the work that we intended to do, let them do their jobs. They are very qualified. She's already working on it. She already just indicated a few minutes ago that she's working on it. Give direction to them that you'd like to have, see that hybrid. I, I think that's the best, the best way to handle it. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Anthony Ludlow, citizen of Frazier now. I haven't been here for a long time, but I've been in the other suburbs and I've seen other things what happens in Recreation. They, they have more money and they've been delegating fairly well, even Sterling Heights, Warren, even Shelby Township. You also got the competition with these lifetime facilities for physical activity and all that. There's a lot of competition for recreation. You got, what, you have Hockeyland. You got Soccerland. This is, you know, this is the way it is. And so the question comes down, is as a smaller community to implement Recreation again, yeah, you have to be creative because it has been lost for some time. I agree with this because as I was listening. The other thing is maybe you don't want to have a senior center. You may want to call it a community center instead. But you have the senior, I, I know, I, I understand, you're gonna say no.
No, we can't.
Why?
Because of the CBGB funds.
The who?
Government funds.
The government funds built it.
Oh, it was a government fund. Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
That's the biggest problem.
Well, that's okay. So I'm, I'm not, I'm, I don't have that information, so I don't know. So I see. Okay, so you got a lock-in with certain things. So that's, that, that, that makes it more difficult. Because I see the thing about the survey is probably correct because you need to, the community has probably changed so much that you should possibly really have a, have, have that survey done before you actually maybe implement people into the system to, to run, run the game, as they say, for lack of better words. I'll go, I'll go, Mr. Dave Winowski?
Winawicki.
Sorry. I, you know, I was a Lukovich, but then my father changed it to Ludlow. So that's besides your point. So much for names and, and that in regards. So, yeah, I think, you know, if you want to get something started, I would suggest that, you know, get the seniors going. But the thing is, what the one support that's really needed is, is the mothers. The mothers need somewhere to go to cohabitate with their, with their children and a smaller scale. I'm talking under the age of 12. Beyond that, you have all this other competition with the other, the Hockeyland, Soccerland, Lifetime, you know, all these other Planet Fitness, whatever. And so an adult person can go anywhere else and sometimes it's even cheaper in that regard. So maybe you might want to just focus with the younger part of the community that needs the support because they don't have the money, maybe. Some families are not that have the money, you know, they're, you know, like me, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not super rich, but I, fortunately, my, I won't go any further with my background unless you really want to. No. You guys take me to dinner, though. Okay. But the, but yeah, I, that's from what I, as being a mayor and what I've heard, this is what my viewpoint is in regards to your Parks and Recreation game. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Name and record for the-
Name and council, Jim Sutherland, 31520, Schoolcraft. I hear a lot of talk about creating plans and trying to figure out what you're gonna do with, with the individual. I think that's backwards. I think what you need to do, you want somebody to establish programs. You want somebody to give you a clear understanding of what's going on. I think you need to have a full-time position and that person, like Ms. Kalka said, these guys, we hired them to do the job. Let them go find us a full-time person that can establish all this stuff for us so that you guys don't have to micromanage the deal. And you guys can sit back and overview it like we pay you to do. Let them do their jobs. You guys do yours. And I think it'll work out better like that. Sure, we may have to eat some money at the beginning, but anytime you start anything new, this person could have a blank slate. How much better can you get? Walking into a job and being able to do what you want to do. That's awesome. But that person doesn't need to be bogged down with what we want them to do or what you want them to do. They need to go out and find a person, a qualified person, and you're not gonna get that part-time. You're not. And then what are you gonna do? You get somebody part-time and then later you decide that you want a full-time person. Now, this part-time person don't want to be full-time because you hired them part-time. And they don't want to move to full-time because they're a mom or whatever the case may be. So now what are you gonna do with that part-time person? Fire them? And then hire a, a brand-new full-time person? So I, I think that's backwards. And as far as the surveys, I think that's great. I think it's a great idea. But you want to know what the citizens want? Look at those flyers that Patrick's got or Mr. Odell, sorry, has about what the other communities are doing. That's where you need to look. You don't need all these big overthinking surveys and overthinking stuff. Don't overthink it. It's clear what people want. It's what are the programs the other surrounding areas are doing. So that's what I had to say. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Deanna Reiner, 1-5569, Luxembourg. Just a couple of points. If you guys are really pushing for a full-time position, I don't agree that that is needed at this point. We should, we even talked about, we need to have the commission filled, right, for the parks, I mean, the recreation, just before you can move forward with anything and with their getting information on what they would like to see happen. So again, that's my one thing is, don't even go full-time. I'm a taxpayer. I've always lived in Frazier many years and seen a lot come and go, but take your time and do this right. But don't push for a full-time person until we even know what's happening with COVID and stuff. And then with the other question, though, if you do get a full-time, would the city have to pay them benefits? Another cost. So again, think the options out much better, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll bring it back. See anybody else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right. You said aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails. Five, two?
I'm, be honest with you, I wasn't sure who, I think that these two of them, the five are-
We, we can do a roll call vote. It doesn't matter. Whatever's easiest for you, Cynthia.
Sure. Go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bransky?
No.
Councilmember Blankey?
No.
Mayor Carnegie?
No.
Councilmember Odell?
Yes.
Councilmember Shornak?
No.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
And Councilmember Winawicki?
No.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bransky?
Yes. I want to not have that die on the vine in terms of ideas and energy and options. And what resident Kalka said, I would, I don't think we need a motion for this because I have a feeling it's already in the works, but I would love if in January Sarah came back after consulting with Amy Sell and Elaine and told us what your plan is for that other part of your job. And you may not have a, you know, oh, on January 1st or whatever, but if you envisioned that, yep, it would make more sense since we have the opportunity to do one full-time versus a part-time and a summer intern. You guys decide and come to us and make a presentation because you're the ones that are gonna have to manage it and deal with the residents day in and day out and then come to us to justify the budget. And oh, by the way, then help us explain why we need to tax the residents more. So that's what I would like. I don't think I need a motion for that. I'll make the motion if I do, but that's, I don't want it to die on the vine. I want the conversation to keep going. I love that we're talking about it. We've been talking about it. We set up a plan. We've had bumps in the road with people leaving, unfortunately. Honest to God, it sounds like we have the right person sitting in that seat right there. And as long as we can keep her out of the bathrooms, I think she'll have time to do what we're hiring her to do. And I say that tongue-in-cheek, but I'm still pissed about it. So that's my thoughts.
Ms. Portem, sure.
Actually, I was gonna actually say pretty much very similar to that. Just like, just say, you know, we, we do want to get Parks and Rec moving, definitely. We want to have programs available. We definitely, I know we have to hire somebody part, or full-time. And I still think a hybrid would be best. So I think that you and Elaine just need to sit down, hammer it out. And I would love it if you can come to the January meeting with your plan and your idea and with Amy Sell and get it going.
This has been something that Amy, myself, and Elaine have been discussing as we discuss the moving parts of what the administration's gonna look like in this coming, not only fiscal year, but calendar year. Just because with a lot of things that are in transition right now, we have been looking at what other options are available. So it's not something that hasn't already been on the radar. It's just something that I know we're gonna have to get to soon. So hopefully with the January meeting, we'll have something more fleshed out for everybody.
And let's, as, you know, as Patrick said, let's make this a priority. You know, we, we, I was anxious last year when it kind of said, we wanted to open things up in July last year and it actually didn't work July, August, September, October, and it took a while, but let's make this a priority. And then let's understand, you understand the hybrid, what I'm talking about, do that. Let's at least talk about it, understand it. Let's just, because someone says no, let's just, you know, let's review it and understand. So we have the data and information to, to make decisions too, so. Councilwoman Sutherland, go ahead.
Then I have a question slash point. So that right now, there is a posting up on the city website for a part-time person at the Senior Activity Center. So then just to make sure that we make it clear, while they're figuring out what the road ahead is gonna look like, are we halting that? Not gonna look for someone, gonna pull the posting down because if it's gonna be a hybrid and it's gonna potentially be somebody who's going to be Recreation and Senior Activity Center, I don't know that Amy should be wasting her time trying to find someone to work part-time at the Senior Activity Center if it's gonna end up being a hybrid.
Well, I would think the more people she can see, the ideas, the better.
Part-time, full-time.
Well, I understand, but even if you find that one person, though, who might fit in as a part-time or a full-time, you don't want to turn the key off with potential that could come to the door and say, okay, I'm interested. That's all.
To me, it just seems like a completely different job description. So someone that you're hiring-
It's a hybrid. It's a totally different job description.
Right. No, that's exactly what I'm saying. So like if, if we have a posting up right now for a part-time Senior Center person, are we gonna find the candidate that we're looking for for a hybrid position by continuing to source that position?
I don't know.
I don't-
Based on the job specifications for that posting, I'm not sure that it would overlap. I would hope that if we were going to go with the full-time person, we'd look for somebody with a leisure services or recreation-
That's why, I mean, like maybe we kind of put a pin in, in what's going on right now while we're figuring this out. Otherwise, we're gonna have both. We're gonna have the part-time person and then we're gonna potentially have the hybrid.
Probably Amy can decide.
I, I am comfortable letting them. I haven't, I'm not signed off on a full-time position. I'll tell you right now, I'm not. Because I had campaign, but I mean, she made it pretty clear that it's probably not gonna happen before January. I'll just be polite and say it that way. So I'm very comfortable trusting them to come back to us with what they think is best. She hasn't failed us yet, in my opinion, so I don't want to stop something because I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm not a yes on a full-time, you, you know. And I'm only one vote.
No, I said the same thing. I just let it go and she can decide.
All right. So, moving on?
EPW Staffing. Amy, you have the floor.
So I had the opportunity for us to work closely with the DPW Department on adding a new clerk position, a part-time clerk position to assist in the DPW activities. In the agenda packet, we included the detailed analysis that we did on the position, the activities, looked at phone and email records and work order logs to make, to valid, to support the recommendation to add a new part-time clerical position in the DPW Department.
Councilwoman Sutherland, go ahead.
I just had one question about the posting. The, one of the requirements was one to three years' experience. It didn't seem like, based on the other requirements, that that was, I was just curious as to why that's a required. Like, are we going to be able to find someone for a part-time DPW position with a requirement of one to three years' experience? Or can that be switched to, like, preferred? Like, what does that look like?
Yeah, I think, I think you would want somebody with relevant experience in the one to three-year range. Sometimes depending on the labor pool and the qualifications, there's other factors like education or other credentials that can combine to, the total package can be looked at, but I, I'm comfortable with, I think we are going to want somebody with a minimum amount of transferable skills for that position.
So it was one to three years required, though, in a DPW clerk-type role? So you think that we will be able to find somebody with one to three years for a part-time DPW clerk position?
On the clerical side, yes. DPW specific, not, so that.
Okay, so it's one to three years clerical experience, not DPW specific?
Yep. Sorry about, yeah, that should have been clarified. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
My only question is, is this position within the budget for '21, '22, or is this an addition to what we've, the council's already approved for DPW? Do we know that, or I don't know who would know that?
I would defer to Mark.
Yeah, we've had somebody come and go. It's like, I don't know if it's, it's not adding a body.
No, that's what I'm saying. Are we adding, are we adding to the budget? Are we going over budget by adding this position or not? That's, that's all I, the only question I have.
So currently, we would not be going over budget because we've had so many part-timers in the DPW leave.
Okay. Thank you.
It wasn't a budgeting position.
To the next budget.
Right, right. I'm just talking about this budget.
The DPW part-timers, yes.
Add it to the budget, but this budget, it would not go over because we're down four, possibly five, part-timers.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bransky?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the staffing of a part-time DPW clerk as outlined in the packet.
Second.
That was.
I wanted to make a comment about that.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Amy, I want to commend you on the research that you did and all the data that you provided. This is the exact thing that we've been talking about all along. Before we'd make a motion to hire someone or fill a position, this is the type of data, and you put together a very comprehensive package that I got through, like, three pages of your, of your backup, and I went, it's a done deal. So I commend, I commend you on putting that package together.
Well, I'd like to thank Mark Ragsdale and Rose and the DPW team for all their, their work on it. It was a, it was a great partnership.
Yeah, especially Rose.
We do have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the audience? I'll bring it back to council. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Senior of Frazier, state of emergency, COVID. Put this on the agenda because we had extended it to the rest of the year based on letting it just go to the end of the year, and on the end of the year is over. I did check with Mr. Hackle for the heck of it, and there's no other counties who are operating under it at all at this time, or cities and all that, so it's probably recommended that we just let it go. Correct?
Well, I don't have a recommendation as to the policy choice of whether we want to continue calling it a state of emergency in Frazier, but for purposes of virtual meetings, it doesn't matter. So I can tell you from the legal side, as much as the MML has looked at or worked with the state legislature to try to get an extension to allow virtual meetings, especially for small boards and commissions and rural areas where they have to drive a long distance to all concrete, legislature doesn't seem interested in that. At least that's the last update I received from the groups that I'm in. So as of December 31st, when we hit midnight and celebrate New Year's Day, we will no longer have, under state law, a legal option for meeting virtually. So that means our zoning board, any commission, any boards and commissions that are public bodies under the Open Meetings Act would have to come back together in person. So for purposes of extending it, the only reason to do it would be just as a sort of token operation showing the city that we still feel that there's an emergency situation with the pandemic, if council's comfortable letting that go because everyone else pretty much has. Unless the Open Meetings Act changes, I won't be recommending reinstatement of it because it doesn't do anything for our boards, commissions, or council.
Great. Council, any feedback?
I'm, like, frozen. Let it go.
Let it go. Okay. Do I need a motion, or we just need?
It will run its course on December 31st, and there's nothing more council needs to do.
Okay. Thank you very much. A report of city administration. Sarah, do you have anything you'd like to report? Elaine said you were going to go over some of her stuff.
We are finalizing the audit presently, so we do look to have that completed towards the end of this month. We may end up seeking an extension just because the extent of things that weren't completed prior to my arrival. Otherwise, does seem like we're on track with everything there. There hasn't been too many hiccups. We're just waiting on an actuarial report at this time for our OPEP liability. Parks and Recreation has been moving forward. We did just have the Christmas in Frazier over the weekend, as you were in attendance, Mayor. It was well-attended, working to get some of the hiccups worked out for next year and have some different vendors in line for availability for reindeer and what have you, but I thought it went well, all things considered, and appreciate everybody that pitched in to help make that event a success. The senior centers in full swing. We're looking to add more planning or programming and working with Officer Rivaldi to get the special Bingo event back. Unfortunately, Bingo was tabled due to the events at Oxford. It shuttered the after-school Frazier High School programs, and they were assisting with the event. We look forward to have a more fleshed-out programming for the coming year, not only for the senior center but for Parks and Recreation as well, and hopefully we will have a lot more to come in 2022 for our residents.
So the deer had a much better salary somewhere else, right? To go.
It was a reindeer shortage, and unfortunately, we didn't get the windfall.
And it needed them.
Turned out to be a good learning experience, and it was a good opportunity to reach out some of the neighbor recreation departments and find out the vendors they're utilizing and where they've had success. So for better or worse, it was a good, good moment for us.
I think next year, we can.
We've got some good people lined up that we're going to reach out to in August, September, and possibly utilize them as well for maybe a Spring Easter-esque event.
And then we did give out close to 300 hot dogs that night, so it was, it was fairly well-attended, so it was nice.
Awesome.
That's how you judge the event.
Uh-huh. That's a lot of hot dogs.
Well, once you get to the 1,200 mark, you know you're doing.
Well, that's a long event. This was only two hours in the cold. Come on. And she's only been here, what, three weeks?
Report of mayor and city council. Miss Sutherland and I will start with you.
Me? Oh, okay. So I know that there's been talk and communication about the park signs a lot, and that there has been a little bit of progress moving as far as Mr. Ragsdale asking for a budget and, you know, color scheme and things like that. Because it's already taken as long as it has, I would just kind of like to throw out there potentially a different approach. In the November meeting, Mr. Ragsdale had talked about supply chain problems and, you know, having a hard time finding a, what's the word he used, contractor to potentially create the signs. I mean, in the spirit of keeping things local as well as the resources that we might have in the city, I mean, is there any way that we would want to put out, you know, a design contest or something where we could build something unique to the city to create the park signs so that we could specify potentially the materials that they would use, meaning that they have to be durable, they can't, you know, fail after a year? But we would be able to, you know, build something more unique than just saying, we want blue and white signs, and we're going to pay X vendor that's, you know, maybe not local. Who knows? Maybe there's some, you know, kids at the arts academy, or there's some shop at the high school where they, you know, they're art students and they want to design some really cool signs that we could have something cool and unique for the city. If we're going to be redoing all of the signs, I think that we just have an opportunity to take a different approach and potentially, you know, build something unique and have it be a little bit more special for the city than just putting up a sign.
Well, just to make it clear for the record.
Yes.
Signs have been over a year. Council did give very good direction on signs. We looked at numerous amount of arts, architectural styles, substrates, all that, and actually had the final direction giving. Colors were the only thing that was left out, either blue or white, or a couple of colors, more green or something like that. The signs were very nice.
So.
But it did get shelved by other people with different ideas, and it just, the focus changed, not by council but by other people, changed the scope of the project of what it was. So that's where the delay and the frustrations come up, because we actually did give, I mean, we passed basically.
We did on the commission, because on the Parks and Recreation Commission, Nick had given us several proposals.
So you guys.
I mean, we signed off on it. There was a couple of different ideas that went around.
I just don't want the community to think that. We're just throwing some half-assed signs together.
Nope, nope. It's not half-assed. It's very structured and, yeah. But I'm just saying, as far as, because there's, there's nothing set in stone right now, potential for a different approach.
Unfortunately, it should have been because I asked for it to be on agenda tonight, and it wasn't, so.
Right. Good workshop discussion. There's, you have three things.
It will be, it will be a part of the workshop discussion.
Perfect. Okay. So then, the other thing, I wanted to say just a great job to the Historical Commission on the sale at Bumgardner House last weekend. I went, and it was fun, and there was a lot of people in there, so good job to them. There's going to be another one this weekend on the 12th from 1:00 to 4:00, and they're going to have half off their Christmas decor, so go to the Bumgardner House and see that. Great job to Sarah and everybody who participated in the Christmas in Frazier. It was, it was well-attended. It was standing room only. I had a child that tripped and fell, and EMS was there to help with her skinned knee, so thank you. And thank you to all the volunteers. Frazier First Booster Club for donating cookies. Thank you to the Mulvey Gardens condo association for their donation of our new star for our tree, so thank you to them. And then, you know, just, you know, we kind of talked about this earlier, but I just wanted to say another huge thank you to Lieutenant Bisby and the entire Public Safety Department for their increased presence at our schools this week. I've got a third grader and a seventh grader in the district, and I can tell you that having those officers made them more at ease, and it also helped the tough conversations that we had to have in our house this week after the tragic events in Oxford. So we have an amazing public safety department in public schools, and I just wanted to say thank you to everybody because as a parent, it definitely made last week a lot easier for our, for our family. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman Bransky?
Okay. We had a gentleman come, and I had forwarded this, I think, to a couple of you before, and so he's not here, so he apparently dropped this off. So I'm just going to bring up that there is a concern about our rental property ordinance and inspections and the constitutionality of them, particularly Amendment 4, the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects, as well as apparently the Charter Township of Clinton has modified it to not be inspections but to be a, send a check and something. I'm not exactly sure, but anyway, he couldn't speak on it today. I encouraged him to come. I guess he couldn't wait through our riveting conversation about everything that we've talked about. It's my understanding, Don, you are looking at not just this ordinance but all of our ordinances as part of your due diligence to make sure we're complying with the Constitution, with the federal, the state, the local laws. And so I'll just reiterate so that if he's watching or if he watches later, that I did share this with everyone, and if anyone wants his number, I can happily share that as well. And Mr. Denal, you'll let us know if you believe we're in violation of any laws. I would just ask that you follow up. If we're doing something wrong, please let us know first before we get sued. So thank you for that. And I don't validate or invalidate anything that we are or are not doing in that regard. Obviously, I want to congratulate and welcome Sarah hitting the ground running. I have heard nothing but praise about the Christmas event. I was out of town, so couldn't attend, but followed on Facebook, saw all the posts, and to do what you did in three weeks on top of apparently being the housekeeper and everything else. And I praised you at the last meeting, and I don't know if you heard it, but, you know, day two, you're telling me the savings word, so thank you. Amazing. And anyone that doesn't appreciate that is, wow, you know, you got, wow. Obviously, prayers go out to everyone, families, friends, our own EMS workers or emergency responders. Dealing with what has happened and what will happen in the future is never easy. We have to remember that this is very real for our employees, very real for our children, ourselves. Our mental health is very important. We're running a business. It might look like we're, you know, just because we're laughing, but this is serious. This is tax dollars and, and everything. So I look forward to 2022, continuing to move the city forward, and just wish everyone a happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Odell?
Start off, I just want to thank the Frazier Goodfellows. Got to do the shopping event this last Sunday, shopping for needy families in Frazier here, and they're getting ready to do their dispersment, and just really congratulate them on the hard work they do. I'm just happy to be a little bit of help with that process. And also, Christmas in Frazier, I thought it was very well-attended. It shows that the need for these events are out there. People want these types of things, and we'll strive to keep making it better and better going forward. Frazier First Booster Club is having its Blue Jean Ball coming up on February 12th. You can buy tickets at FrazierFirst.com. They're $45 at the Vintage House here in Frazier, includes dinner and open bar, and a really good time, and helps put money right back into your local community. So tickets are already selling ahead of last year, or two years ago pace, and so I encourage people to get their tickets because it does pretty much sell out every year, so. And then finally, just happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everybody out there. I hope you have a great, safe holiday with all your family and friends, and see you next month.
Thank you. Councilwoman Blanke?
Thank you, Mayor. We did a lot of business tonight, and there's a lot of things in the news and all that that caused us to, pardon?
Go ahead.
That caused us to lose the focus of Christmas, and this is a Christmas meeting, and it's one of the longest, I think, we've had. However, we did a lot. But in closing, I have nothing to say related to the city or anything. I just hope, my, my wish is hope. We all need hope right now, more than ever. So I'm going to read a little poem. "A little child, a shining star, a stable rude, the door ajar. Yet in that place, so crude, forlorn, the hope of all..." Yet in that place, so crude, forlorn, the hope of all, for the world, was born." So I pray that everybody holds on to that hope because we need it more than ever, I think, in our world today and all around us. And I hope, because as old as I am, I still search in the sky on Christmas Eve, and I wish that for everybody. Keep looking at the sky and searching. God love you, Merry Christmas, thank you.
Always looking up for that red nose too, I can't find it.
I do, forever.
How could I follow that?
You don't have the Santa beard this going this year.
No, I think a lot's been said and I agree with everything, and I, you know, we won't be here until next January, so I'm gonna say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. And I do want to again also commend Sarah on the Christmas in Frazier. We were not able to attend, we had our Christmas with our family because we flew them in from Texas and Las Vegas and we did it early, so apology for not being there, but family came first. But I heard all kinds of great things about it, so.
I have a question.
No questions, just talk.
It's still business, yes. Yeah, okay. So here's my question slash concern. So I was speaking to Marilyn with the Historical Commission, and I 100% get that we need to be very proactive in making sure that money is being spent appropriately. However, I think it's ridiculous that they have to get approval to spend $1.99 on candy canes or $3 on cocoa and they have to email Rose and then Rose has to email you guys and then they want appeal for that. I think we need to put like, okay, and what I, what used to happen and what I still think should happen is anything under $50, the person, and this is what we used to do because I was on the Historical Commission, is we would pay for it and we would submit our receipts. We didn't have to get permission to get candy canes for the open house to turn around and it took like a couple days and then you have somebody who has to go to the store, find out how much it is, get approval to spend $1.99. I mean, they have to get permission to get mon, to spend money to buy toilet paper or commission members are just bringing it in. I, I think that's ridiculous, so I think we should have a policy that says like, okay, yes, they absolutely have to give receipts 100%, but anything under $50, if it is a reasonable expense, I mean, because you can always deny it, if they, if they turn in a bill and a receipt and you're like, yeah, no way are we gonna allow that. But they, she was telling me, she was reading me from the email, that said this is the new policy and I was like, oh, that's stupid.
In their bylaws that any expenses have to go to Elaine, that was the only thing that was ever communicated to Rose, that expenses need to be approved by the city. I didn't realize that was specific, the specificity of it being candy canes with the removal of the credit cards and everything, it is kind of what we've all had to adopt where we do seek approval prior to even purchasing something, whether we're gonna be reimbursed or not. I'm not gonna go spend $30 on crafts at Dollar Tree without at least, you know, making sure the budget money is available, making sure that, you know, everybody's on board.
That money isn't budget money that they're spending, that's my problem. Because the Historical, they, they are the ones raising their own money, okay? So they raise their own money, they do have a budget for the house because the house is the city's property, so the city does have to maintain it with the DPW and stuff like that. But right now, like, all their, all the things that they're doing is they've been saving up for a roof, for a new roof. Okay, so what people have to understand is that the commission is raising that money to replace the roof, which is the city's responsibility really, but they're taking it over, and what I'm saying is, we have to be reasonable. I'm sorry, and I don't, I, I think it's ridiculous. If someone told me, "You have to get permission to spend $1.99 candy canes," I'd probably, like, I would go through the roof, I'm not gonna lie to you, I'd be like, that's ridiculous, although me personally, I would just donate it. But they already donate their time because they're the only commission in the city that does not get paid, and they are very passionate people, and I get it 100%, but then, you know, then they're spending their time, going to find out it's $1.99, coming back, sending an email, waiting for Rose to send an email to you guys, then getting an email back, okay, go ahead and spend the $1.99, now I gotta go back to the store, you know, same with the hot cocoa. I'm talking about small little things like toilet paper and stuff like that, I think they should just be able to submit their receipt.
I haven't been involved in their discussions up until this...
I know, no, I know, Elaine's not here, so this is why I'm telling you this. So I'm saying that we have to revisit how we're doing that because that, that it's just labor-intensive and it's silly for, for, they're not wasting money.
If they anticipate expenses, I guess, with events or with the facility, I don't, I don't want to speak on behalf of Elaine, but I don't see it being an issue with them saying, "Hey, we anticipate we're gonna need to buy XYZ for this event, is that okay?" And then do submit for the reimbursement because that's something that Mary and I, when we have something going on, it's okay. Like, Mary helped me get crafts for, at the Christmas in Frazier event. Well, Mary, she's like, "If they're gonna be a dollar each, I picked up 40, is that gonna be available on the budget? Yeah, that's fine, do you want us to get more?" So it was just communication like, "Hey, this is what's going on, is the reimbursement gonna get denied if the funds are available and it's approved? No," but just to have the checks and balances that everybody's on the same page of what's being spent, I don't, I don't know what happened.
Right, but everybody would still do that, but I'm saying for ancillary things like that, that, that's, again, their budget, that's not where their money's coming from. That money that they're asking for is coming from the money that they've raised. So it, while it's under the city financials, it is, it is money they've raised for that. So again, they're not looking to spend hundreds and thousands of dollars, I just think it's absolutely ridiculous that they have to go through all this to get, to get $1.99 approved. And I want the checks and balances, that's why they would turn in the receipts, that's what they used to do, and/or then just give the commission where they still have to give the receipts to you, but had a, they used to have a petty cash of $50 and they would go buy their cocoa or go buy their toilet paper or go buy whatever they needed, and then they would simply submit those to the person, well, now it's Rose, but who, the person that was in charge at the time, which I think was Lorena because she was over the library and the library was all kind of combined, and I know that all switched, but I'm saying we have to do things better and smarter. That is a waste of everybody's time. Sending four emails just to get permission to buy something like that is, it, that's just silly. It doesn't make any sense. So I'm just asking you to please have that conversation with Elaine and then maybe we come up with a different way of handling small stuff like that. I totally understand, we want to know every single penny we're spending, I get it, but within reason, we, you know, reimbursing people.
We are working on developing more comprehensive, not only purchasing policies but overall financial policies. That was something that we've been discussing with the auditor, so not just the Historical Commission, a broader view for the whole city, the credit card policy was a good step in the right direction, but having policies to cover all of our expenditures, whether it be bid limits, what have you, those need to be in place to make sure that we're operating transparently for the community.
Yeah, and I'm 100% okay with transparency, I'm just saying certain things are ridiculous, that's one of them. So just, yeah, if you guys can like, you know, it doesn't have to be next month, but let us know, kind of keep us in the loop of what that's going to be and what that's gonna look like, that would be great. I did want to thank Chris Miller for his service on the Parks and Rec. I know that he genuinely cares about the city and donating his time and it bums me out that he has conflicts, but I want to thank him for his service for Parks and Rec and then just wish everybody happy holidays because everybody doesn't necessarily celebrate Christmas, so happy Kwanzaa, happy Hanukkah, and I know I'm missing some things there, but, and hopefully, let's hope this new year could be better. God, please.
Thank you. I only have a couple of quick things. We actually did our Shop with a Hero this week, we had 38 Frazier children that we took to Myers over here in Frazier, 38, and took them all shopping and they each got $100, around $100 to spend and anything they wanted to get, so that was a lot of fun and afterwards they had pizza and pop to take home, so. Always a great event and Scott Rivaldi and Nicole Reinhardt do a great job with that every year, so. Good event, Christmas that was really good, things that we can make better next year as we talked about, but good turnout to give another 250, 300 hot dogs away, so we got a couple hundred left if anyone eats some hot dogs for Christmas.
You'll be serving them at the next event.
I gotta get rid of these. I gotta get rid of these. Let's see. And just, everybody, we wish you all safe, happy holidays, a safe new year. Don't drink and drive is my thing for the New Years and take care of your family, so. At this time, I will ask the audience for any participation. Audience? Can you give me a ride home?
Not I can.
Just can't go over to my curbs. Okay, I'll bring it back to council for a motion.
I think...
Oh, I'm sorry.
He can either look right, left, or he can't do it all.
I was looking over there first and I was...
You didn't jump fast enough.
I guess not. I was trying to give other people opportunity. Laura Lessidge, 15201 Fairview. First, I want to welcome our new council members to the team here, I think you guys did a great job as a team and whole. I think some of your conversations went on way too long and as it's already been discussed, a little bit of micromanaging on that front. I do want to mention, you know, you guys were mentioning all the activities happening in the city coming up. There's also a ladies' night on Wednesday, 12:15, at the Infinity Hall where vendors will be there, so you can go there and have, get your last minute shopping done and have a drink while you do it. So that's coming up. I want to mention too, the recreation cleaning discussion was, I couldn't believe you guys were having it, number one. Number two, I thought back in the summer, there was a plan for the opening of the center and we kept hearing about a plan, a plan, and I would have thought that the deep cleaning would have been done prior to the election since they had voting going on in that center, and that the plan, if you were gonna open up the center, you would have the plan to clean the center in the opening and not be struggling to figure out how you're gonna clean the toilets or who's gonna do it.
It was cleaned before the election, well, deep cleaned.
So if you're gonna open the center for the seniors, there should have been a plan in place for cleaning to start. I think, I was on the Parks and Rec Commission meeting the other day, which was not really a meeting because there was no quorum, but in the discussion, Sarah pointed out that you need time to plan these things, and she's already got it in place to get ready for Christmas in Frazier. Well, as we want to do here with planning the Parks and Rec or some activities for this summer, if you guys don't have anything this summer, we are done with, people are not gonna even think about coming to Frazier for a park or a recreation activity. It has to get planned now, as, as we talked about. Easter is, thank God, is later this time, it's in April, you gotta start planning for the Easter program. We missed out on the daddy-daughter dance, it would have been in February, which was always a well-attended program that we had at Vintage House, so that's done. But if you're gonna start having some type of activity, you gotta start now, so I'm looking forward to the plan that the city administration is gonna put out there for that. And that's all I have, I'm not gonna go over my time, thank you.
Anybody else? You see that?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Good night, everybody.